The November 14, 2019 meeting of the Williamsburg City Council will come to order. Ms. Felico, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Maslin.
Here.
Ms. Ramsey.
Here.
Mayor Freiling.
Here.
Vice Mayor Pons.
Here.
Mr. Zhang.
Here.
Before us, we have the city council meeting minutes from September 12, 2019. Are there any additions or corrections?
Seeing none, I'll move to approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
Ms. Felico.
Mr. Maslin.
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey.
Aye.
Mayor Freiling.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pons.
Aye.
Mr. Zhang.
Aye.
Next, we have matters of special privilege, and today's is an excellence in service to Williamsburg Award, which is always a pleasure for us to be able to present because it is the recognition of a particularly special contributing member of city staff who's been voted that by their peers. So I'm going to come forward to the podium. My colleagues would come with me, and I'd like to ask Deputy Chief Snyder to join us there. This is the part where Leanne likes to take lots of pictures. So the city of Williamsburg takes pleasure in recognizing Larry W. Snyder Jr. for excellence in service to Williamsburg. Deputy Chief Larry W. Snyder Jr. has faithfully and honorably served the citizens of Williamsburg for the past five years. From his very first day as a city of Williamsburg employee, Chief Snyder has led by example and regularly demonstrated a high level of dedication and public service to the Williamsburg community. Over this time, he has willingly and eagerly taken on more responsibility for the overall good of the fire department and for the city. Enthusiastically volunteered to serve as chairperson for both the city's safety committee and for the local emergency planning committee, and served on the city's communication team to help with PIO duties during the extended absence of the city's communications specialist, volunteering to serve as the initial point of contact for media requests. Chief Snyder has served as the lead for the 2019 Surrey Vopex Drill, was on the planning team for William &amp; Mary's Tricorn Exercise, and he oversaw the department's role in the regional launch of Pulse Point. Most recently, Chief Snyder served as interim fire chief when he performed admirably, maintaining continuity of operations during the transition to the new fire chief. Larry Snyder is an exemplary city employee and is vital to the success of the Williamsburg Fire Department. He is hereby recognized for his dedication to excellence in keeping with the best traditions of public service in the city of Williamsburg, and it is signed by myself as the mayor and Mr. Trivett as the city manager. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And how great is it to see so many of your comrades here supporting you?
Absolutely.
In addition to this terrific certificate, he gets a really spiffy plaque to hang up. So now it's your turn to say a few words.
I have nothing to say other than thank you first and foremost to my wife and my son who are here. They spend, they're the ones who do the true sacrifice to allow us to be the public servants that we are, and then the men and women of the Williamsburg Fire Department who support us every day. Mr. Trivett for the opportunity to serve as interim for a few months, and to the community for their support. So at the end of the day, we're a great community and grateful to be here and be a part of the great things that we continue to do.
Well, that's one agenda item we all agreed upon, so that's great. This takes us to several public hearings today. We're going to have the first two public hearings together, but we will vote on those separately. They are PCR 19-020, request of John and Deborah Keane to amend Section 21-2 definitions of the zoning ordinance by adding the definition of a small "in" and Section 21-605 to add small "in" as an allowed use on Jamestown Road and Richmond Road with a special use permit as outlined in Proposed Ordinance 19-23. We will also have a hearing on PCR 19-021, request of John and Deborah Keane for a special use permit for a small "in" for a Williamsburg White House at 718 Jamestown Road located in the single-family dwelling district RS2 for an increase from six rooms to nine rooms rented to visitors. Ms. Murphy.
Yeah, Mayor Freiling and members of council. John and Deborah Keane are requesting to amend the zoning ordinance to define a small "in" and to allow a small "in" with a special use permit approved by city council on portions of Jamestown Road and Richmond Road as outlined in Section 21-605.3 of the zoning ordinance. The definition of a small "in" is proposed to be an establishment with 10 rooms or less rented to transient visitors. The applicants also propose to increase the number of rooms rented to visitors from six bedrooms to nine bedrooms for their property at 718 Jamestown Road on over an acre. And on this overhead, you can see the outline of the property on Jamestown Road. This property is designated Low Density Single Family Detached Residential in the 2013 comp plan and is zoned Single Family Dwelling District RS2. The Architecture Review Board conceptually approved the addition at their August 27th meeting, and on this overhead are the conceptual elevations for the proposed addition. The increase from six rooms to 10 rooms rented to transit visitors is outlined in the proposed ordinance applies to properties located on Jamestown Road and Richmond Road with a special use permit. These regulations are similar to the current regulations that allow up to six rooms with a special use permit with the limitation of allowing a small "in" only on Richmond Road and Jamestown Road if the requirements in the proposed ordinance submit and a use permit is approved by city council. We currently allow bed and breakfast establishments to rent up to four rooms to visitors meeting the requirements in the ordinance with approval from the Board of Zoning Appeals. The rental of from four to six rooms currently is allowed if city council adopts or approves a special use permit. The applicant proposes 11 parking spaces, as you can see on the overhead, out front adjacent to Jamestown Road, which is currently screened, with an ADA space at the rear adjacent to the ramp that enters the ADA accessible room. The owner's spaces are provided at the rear adjacent to the ADA space and in front of the detached garage. The ordinance requirements for the proposed nine rooms is 11 spaces. The proposed use is in harmony with the adopted comp plan, the zoning district, and adjacent properties. It is adequately served by essential public services and is designed and cited so that the use will not hinder or discourage the appropriate development or use of adjacent properties and the surrounding neighbors. The size of the lot is over one acre. So on this overhead, you can see the existing house, the proposed addition, and what's in the left-hand corner is a proposed berm to meet this, to help with the stormwater requirements from the addition and the old addition. What we had was we had an adjacent property owner express concerns about the drainage from the property. We met with the owners and the John Hocke and came up with this small berm area where the water can go up against it and infiltrate into the ground. So I expressed that back to the adjacent property owner, and they thanked me for addressing that concern with them. Planning Commission held a public hearing on October 16, and no one spoke at the hearing. Planning Commission recommended to city council by a vote of 601 approval of the proposed ordinance 1923 to define a small "in" and to allow a small "in" with a special use permit as outlined in the ordinance. They also recommended approval of a special use permit for the rental of nine rooms to visitors conditioned upon the three conditions in my memo. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions for Ms. Murphy?
I don't have any.
No questions.
We spent a lot of time on the short-term rentals. How many successful applications do we have so far?
We had one short-term rental on Matoka Court that was approved, and we had one application on Washington Street that was denied, so that's the only two applications we've had.
Thank you.
Okay. With that, we'll open the public hearings, or hearing. I have one speaker's card, but before I call that person, I'd be happy to let the applicant speak. No obligation, it's up to you. Okay. The first speaker's card is Ron Kirkland. Welcome, Mr. Kirkland. If you'd be kind enough, I know we have the card, but just for the audience, if you could provide your name and address, we appreciate that.
Ron Kirkland, 1001A, Richmond Road, Suite 2E, Williamsburg, Virginia. Good afternoon, Mayor Freiling, members of council. On behalf of the Williamsburg Hotel and Motel Association, we agree with staff's recommendation and the Planning Commission's recommendation to amend the zoning and the special use permit for a small "in" PCR 19-020 and 021. I would ask that you consider approving that as well. Anytime that business owners in the community are looking to spend additional dollars to reinvest in their properties and improve them, we're a big supporter of that, and we hope you will be too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kirkland. Anybody else like to address council? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. I'll come back to my colleagues for comments.
Well, I think Mr. Kirkland said a lot there. You know, I'm very pleased to see that local businesses have this opportunity to expand their business, make investments, and it's not very easy oftentimes to do that in this environment. And for the Keens to have been there for nearly 20 years now, operating a small "in", and if this helps them deliver a better product and bring more people to town and have that residual spending happen, I think it's a good move. So I'm very comfortable with this.
I joined the vice mayor in supporting the special use permit and the definition to the zoning ordinance. I think the scope of the regulation's reasonable based on Carolyn's very thorough report. It seems from Planning Commission, they had no, they didn't raise any issues that we would have found that needed to be addressed up here. I think it's just remarkable, given how, I remember when I was a student, there were a huge conversation about the role of bed and breakfasts in this community. And out of those multiple, you guys went through it, multiple public hearings, they crafted a good policy. I think today, to extend that with a small "in" and not to have so much opposition, I think it's a testament to what staff has done over the years with our traditional bed and breakfasts, and this is just an extension of that. And I think that's great, and happy to support the Keens and their businesses over the past few years.
I too am happy to support their request. I think it's another opportunity to expand lodging in the city, and as people travel different ways and look for various experiences, this provides something for small wedding parties, different reunion, class groups, things like that. And I think it also recognizes the uniqueness of their property, having such a large parcel right there on Jamestown Road, and this gives them an opportunity to utilize more of the property and bring more people in to enjoy it. So, thank you.
I agree with all the colleague comments. Thank you.
The Keens came with a request several years ago to city council to expand their business, and at the time, I was not in favor of that because I felt like it was growing the property too large for the residential character of that corridor. And so we didn't give them the same latitude that they had requested. In that period of time, I feel like the corridor has evolved. It's changed significantly from the growth on the university side with the business school, now we've got the reconstruction project around Phi Beta Kappa. We've got more of the university coming across the street. We have the expansion of the Methodist Church down the street, and it's almost getting a little more of an institutional flavor along that road. And so to me, the, I'm not at all concerned about the expansion for that reason, and also because of the Keens' terrific track record of maintenance of their property, of a well-operated business that, success of which is supported by the people who stay there and the reviews that they provide, a good design on the expansion on what really is a somewhat unique piece of property in the city of Williamsburg. And the great thing is, they're building a business that not only contributes to the local economy, but at the same time adds a little bit of downtown vibrancy because the people who stay in that property, the additional people, will no doubt want to come down to the downtown area, enjoy the amenities, spend their money, and contribute to the vitality in that way. So from all of those standpoints, I think this is a terrific proposal. I want to thank city staff for working very diligently to make it possible for the Keens for persisting and seeking the dream again, and we're happy to support it. So if I could have a motion. We have two, by the way. One at a time?
I move that city council approve proposed ordinance 19-23 as recommended by Planning Commission.
Second.
Ms. Felico?
Aye.
Aye.
Mayor Freiling.
Aye.
Mayor Pons.
Aye.
Mr. Zhang.
Aye.
Mayor, I'll move the, to approve the special use permit with the three conditions recommended by the Planning Commission.
Second.
Ms. Felico?
Mr. Maslin.
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey.
Aye.
Mayor Freiling.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pons.
Aye.
Mr. Zhang.
Aye.
Both of those motions pass. Thank you. This takes us to our third public hearing, ARB 19-105, request of 1007 Lafayette LLC, Rob and Camille DiMaio, to appeal the decision of the Architecture Review Board on September 24, 2019, to deny the after-effect replacement of wood windows with vinyl windows at 1007 Lafayette Street. Ms. Murphy?
Mayor Freiling and members of council, on September 24, the Architecture Review Board denied the request for after-effect approval of the replacement of wood windows with vinyl windows in the dwelling located at 1007 Lafayette Street, and that's outlined in the overhead picture in blue. The board denied the request because the Design Reviews Guidelines state, existing wood windows should be retained and repaired, and if restoration is not possible, then copies of the original window matching the existing sash and frames with duplicates in wood form and details will be required. The board did approve the replacement of two aluminum windows on the rear with vinyl windows. In your packet, I attached the applicant's appeal letter, the ARB application, the minutes from the September 24 meeting, staff comments, letter of denial to the applicant, and the Design Review Guidelines. The zoning ordinance regulates the appeals process, and I outline that also in my memo to you. The zoning ordinance also states that the same standards shall be applied by the council as are established for the board. These standards include the criteria for approval listed in Section 21855(c), the design guidelines adopted by city council on October 13, 2013, historic preservation in urban design for the 2013 comprehensive plan, and I also attached those excerpts. City council needs to use these standards in deciding on the appeal for the Architecture Review Board's decision. This property is located in the city's Architectural Preservation District, AP3, which was adopted by city council in 2013. Staff needs to decide, the city council needs to decide whether to affirm, reverse, or modify in whole or part the decision of the Architecture Review Board to deny ARB 19105 the request of 1007 Lafayette LLC for a property they own at 1007 Lafayette Street.
I can't find it, thank you.
Are you done?
Yeah. I just jumped in there. I thought you looked at me.
I'll be happy to answer any questions. The applicants are also here.
Just some clarity. I know the applicant had sent a letter, but in that, they had kind of, they talked about how they felt they had, the window that they put in met the requirements, but was that, was the window standard that they were referring to not applicable to what they were doing in this environment?
That's correct. When you go to the Architecture Review Board Guidelines, in the last update, the previous version had the guidelines for new construction and existing buildings altogether in paragraphs. So as part of the update in 2013, we separated the two to make it easier for applicants to know what applies to them. So we have an existing section for existing buildings in each of the three districts, and we also have new buildings, where new buildings can be new buildings, complete new buildings, additions, and those types of things. So the part they were referencing was in the new building section, not the existing building section.
Thank you. That's all the questions I have.
Thanks, Ms. Murphy, for your comprehensive report. Let me start off with this question. What is the goal and role of ARB? I mean, is it for colonial preservation? Is it for neighborhood preservation?
Architectural preservation is preservation of existing structures. So that's the main goal of architectural preservation.
Sure. So I see with this particular house on 1007 Lafayette Street, that's a, was it metal awning in the front? Is that, was that something that was original to the house or later added?
That was probably added before the guidelines became adopted. So if it's there before the guidelines are adopted, it's basically grandfathered or nonconforming.
And nonconforming use. Now, I know that the comprehensive plan is kind of, you know, moving towards the end of its useful life. It's 2013, and localities are required every five years to update it, so we're in the midst of that. I know you referenced that in your report, but also with, you know, seeing other, the applicant noted in his letter that they've seen other vinyl windows. I'm assuming the front end throughout other streets, are they just, was it something original to those houses, or perhaps maybe those are in violation too?
We've had probably over 50 years with the Design Review Guidelines, and they all started out in different, and got updated over time. So what we did with the Architecture Review Board also in our last update is we looked at neighborhoods specifically. So we used to have just AP and CP districts, and everything across the city fell in those districts. Now we have an AP1, which is the historic area, and our national registered districts of Chandler Court and Pilot Park in some areas of downtown, such as Merchant Square. We also then have AP2 districts, which are a little bit older houses that were constructed just on the perimeter of the AP1 over time, neighborhoods like Indian Springs, Burns Lane, West Williamsburg Heights. And then we have the, we looked at AP3 districts, which were ones, houses that were built right after World War I. So they're older, they're over 50 years old, but it was important for their preservation. We also looked at these AP3 districts because a lot of those houses had the vinyl siding, the aluminum siding folks that came through, a lot of the original windows were removed, different materials. They also had some Masonite siding on their structures. So we thought that district should not be held to as high a standards as the AP1 and the AP2. So we had a hierarchy of districts in the city. So that's how a lot of these structures were, the, some of the windows were removed, like the awning over the front window, front door. We would not allow a, that type of awning today, but since it's there, it's grandfathered.
So I, obviously, I've never served on ARB, so you'll have to help me out a little bit here. From what I see in my perspective, that whole area, and one of the reasons why you designate with AP3 is to also, you know, I guess to correlate that with the Arts District, with some of the regulations, I'm assuming, right? Because it's part of that district. We've seen that area change so much. We've seen, even though technically it's not within this particular zoning district, even nearby, we see Midtown Road with the colors that have been approved by ARB. And some folks in the audience, even, you know, they may have not read the Design Review Guidelines, but they might think, why, you know, if they can have those colors in Midtown Road, why can't this couple in particular get by?
Midtown Road is in a corridor protection district in which the guidelines are even different. What you have to remember, there are some really cute bungalows and historic structures in the AP3 district, and we didn't want to lose those. Those are our buildings that have to think over time. Everybody knows about the historic area and thinks that's important and important to preserve. But we have a history of building in the city that if you start taking the historic fabric away from those buildings, you lose the historic preservation part of it. Once you have an old window, that's, you know, an old window is old-growth window, hardwood, those types of things. Once it's thrown away, it can never come back. A replacement window is looking 10 to 20 years, and you're going to have to replace that window. So it's not, it's a preservation issue, but it's also a green issue. Are you trying to fill your landfills up with materials and stuff? Or you're trying to help the economy of the city by having labors and stuff that come into your city and repair these older houses and keep the historic preservation part of the city?
Right. Well, I appreciate that insight. I think windows are such a big investment for energy efficiency purposes in a house, and you could put out an argument saying that, well, maybe, you know, by having such stringent standards with windows, maybe you're actually undermining the whole preservation of an entire house. But anyways, that's just an opinion, not necessarily insight. I know that that...
But on that instance, I think it's important for people to understand that we have, when we looked at the Design Review Guidelines, we looked at a bunch of material in the National Historic Preservation. The Department of Energy finds that only 10% of air leakage in homes is attributed to windows. In the average home, 14% escapes through fireplaces, and upwards of 30% occurs through floors, walls, and ceilings. So it's a misnomer when people think that if you, the windows are the reason your energy bills are higher. Most likely, it's the other, the other issues, especially in these older homes.
One last question. I noted that, saw that during the ARB meeting appeal, there was one person, one member who voted against, well, against the majority. So what was his rationale for voting against the other?
You were in the meeting, you heard what I heard. I think he felt some sympathy towards the applicant, but I can't speak for him. I mean, that's...
It's your board, but, okay. Thank you.
I only have one question. I know that windows have been an issue in the past, and this is not the first instance of someone replacing the windows with the incorrect kind. What has happened in other situations where this has occurred?
We had a request, and I would also like to state that this, the reason staff knew about this request was from a complaint from an adjacent property owner because they wanted to do the same thing and knew the guidelines had changed. But there was another house, I believe it's three houses over from the bank building on Lafayette Street, that they did, took the wood windows out, replaced them with vinyl windows, went to the Architecture Review Board, got denied, appealed to council, council upheld the ARB's decision, and then we had to file court action, and before we went to court, the owners agreed to replace those windows, and they replaced the windows, and that's how we resolved that instance. We've had them in other neighborhoods, another one on Griffin Avenue at the corner of Griffin and With. There were 30 some windows that were removed, and that owner took the vinyl windows out and put in the appropriate windows, did not appeal to city council, and there have been other cases throughout the city over time. Windows has been one of those ones that pokes his head up every so often.
But would you say that in all the instances, any vinyl windows that were installed where there should have been wood windows have not remained once they've been noticed to be the incorrect windows?
They've even, they've either appealed and AR, and city councils upheld the decision, or they've put the proper windows in that meet the Design Review Guidelines.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. On the application letter, there were a couple of comments about not having proper notice. Did you review those with the applicant? And, for example, the, on page 26, the data sheet from the, this is the data sheet from our real estate department, was that something that the owners would have had when they purchased the property?
I can't, that's something you'll probably have to ask the owners, but on our tax information, if you go to our website, it gives you the zoning district. It also gives you if you're in an architectural preservation district.
At what time would we be talking to the applicants? Is that after we talk to staff?
Well, we haven't opened the public hearing yet. So once we finish with questions from Ms. Murphy, the applicant can speak, and then so can anybody else. And then after we close the public hearing, you can still ask questions.
Okay. So looking at maybe conflict with other public policies, it's been stated in here that to change back would be adding $25,000 to the... it's been stated in here that to change back would be adding $25,000 to the price of the house. Has that been substantiated, that number?
I can't, I don't know how much it costs to replace the windows in that house. I can tell you, it depends on the number of windows and the size of the windows. Some neighborhoods where the windows are, are like 609, they had to special make the windows, which makes you cost a little more. But these windows look like a typical sized window. So I don't know what the cost of replacing, putting back true divided light wood windows are in.
So, because my question is, are we, are we working against our objective to have more affordable housing in the city by enforcing this?
Well, unfortunately, the windows were removed without staff even getting to look at them and making a determination if the windows could be repaired or if the windows were in such a condition they couldn't be repaired. Maybe there were two windows or three windows that needed to be replaced and it wouldn't cost you $25,000. But unfortunately, they were done without any review by the city. So I can't tell you what kind of condition they were in. And, you know, it's unfortunate that that happened, but that's what we're faced with.
Following up on the comment about loss of energy, so I assume the original windows were single pane? Are these single pane too?
Single pane.
Yeah. Now-
Also in that report, a single pane window with a storm window is as energy efficient as a double pane window or better?
Most of the energy loss in windows is not, it's not through the glass, it's through the insulation around the side.
It's through the, the most energy lost is through the walls, the flooring, if you're not insulated in the flooring, and in the ceilings, if the ceiling's not insulated. And a lot of the old buildings don't have it in the walls and so forth.
Particularly to the window. It's still, it's the gaps around the windows.
And you should seal and repair and paint and cork and do those things and you, you reduce that amount of energy loss.
So driving down Lafayette and looking at this house, are people really going to notice whether they're wood or vinyl windows?
I can go through town and tell you everyone. So yes, I would notice.
Well, she's the plaintiff. She's good at her job, so wrong person has.
If you really look, if you really look at a true divided light window and a simulated divided light window, yes, if you stopped and looked, yes, I believe you could tell the difference.
Yeah. But this is a question of material, isn't it? Vinyl versus wood, it's not-
Yes, it's also true divided light and simulated divided light.
So there are two issues here.
There's a difference.
The, because I think the most objectable thing that everybody sees is, is the aluminum awning. And then the next thing is really the aluminum, which is not allowed. And then the next one would be the aluminum storm door. Really because of the design, aluminum storm doors are allowed. The window is probably the last of those three that, that I would be objecting to. Is there any ability to negotiate with the applicant to tear down the, or remove the aluminum awning and forgive the window?
No, sir.
Because that might be better in terms of the way it looks.
It's not from staff standpoint to do that negotiation.
Okay, I'll save questions until the open hearing.
I don't have any questions for you, Ms. Murphy. Ms. Shelton, can you, have you served on ARB? Mr. Ponson and I both served on ARB. I don't believe our other colleagues have. Can you help define what our role is here and what is the question that we are answering? My understanding is our role is to determine, and so please correct me if I'm wrong. Our role is to determine if the ARB has correctly and appropriately applied the guidelines to the application and has nothing to do with what the guidelines are, whether we like the guidelines, don't like the guidelines, prefer something else. It's that one simple question of did the ARB correctly apply the guidelines to the application?
That's correct. The guidelines have been adopted by city council. They are part of the zoning ordinance. In order for there to be a change in the guidelines, the city council would need to approve those changes in the same way that it approves any other zoning ordinance change. So right now, the law is the guidelines that the ARB is responsible to interpret when it receives an application from an applicant. And your decision as city council is to determine whether the ARB has correctly applied the guidelines to this situation.
But it's also known that city council has broad legislative authority. And thus, we can make determinations as long as it doesn't fall under arbitrary and capricious standard. And, you know, those guidelines are nice because they're guidelines, but they're not enforceable like a contract or covenant is.
They are enforceable in the same way that the zoning ordinance is enforceable. So if you have, if you determine that the ARB did not correctly apply the zoning ordinance in this instance, you have the authority to overturn that decision. But in order to overturn the guidelines themselves, city council would have to go through the rezoning process and approve new guidelines.
Those are two different.
Yes.
But I just wanted to make sure that even though I think the guidelines are supremely helpful for this matter of appeal, because then any council could really just find any reason to overturn ARB. I think they're helpful, but I think it's also important that we also have the broad legislative authority to uphold ARB or we can overturn them. Nothing says that we have to stick to those guidelines or else we are out of legal boundary, so.
Also, I think words matter. So for us to use the term guidelines, and in the, some reports they recommend in terms of required, I think it sends a mixed message.
Thanks, Dave.
Just to be clear, the question we're answering is, did the ARB appropriately interpret the guidelines and apply them to the request? Is there no level of appeal past council?
The applicant has the right to appeal to the circuit court.
So we're not the final word in that. So if there's a question about the legal standing of what we're doing, there is remedy for that.
So just to follow up on that, and I understand what the question is here. If we voted unanimously to say that the guidelines were not followed correctly, what's the implication to that?
The-
Or by majority, not-
The adjacent property owners would have standing to sue the city council for not appropriately applying the guidelines. The city council has adopted those guidelines until the city council changes those guidelines. Those guidelines are the zoning ordinance. An aggrieved property owner has the ability to pursue a remedy if they feel the council has not applied those correctly.
But that's, that's suing on a case-by-case basis, right? That doesn't, just because they can sue it, doesn't mean they'll win. And I don't think, even based on a case-by-case basis, it's not challenging, again, the ARB guidelines. So it's not a facial challenges and as-applied challenge. I don't think they really have a successful standing against them, right?
They would have standing, whether or not they would be-
Anyone has standing, right?
Whether or not they would be successful is a question for the court.
Right. It's hard to tell.
Any other questions from Ms. Murphy, Ms. Shelton?
Yeah. Well, could, could counsel also recommend putting a hold on enforcement pending a review of the ordinance?
City council could choose not to take an action today. City council could instruct the staff to review the guidelines and come back with recommendations regarding how to change the guidelines and go through the zoning process and amend the guidelines.
Six months, a year?
Carolyn has a better sense of how long that would take than I do.
As part of the comp plan update, that's always a recommendation. I've already had it in the schedule to start review of design review guidelines in January. So it probably takes eight to nine months to go through the review. We start out with a public hearing with architectural review board. Before we even start, for individuals to come in and talk about any concerns or, or issues they might have with the, with the guidelines, so that the architecture review board starts out with any concerns. And staff over the last five years have also written in any concerns that we've had, if cases have come up, so we start out with those. And then we basically go through chapter by chapter, come up with a draft guidelines. We then hold a public hearing for the architectural review board and give citizens an opportunity to come in and talk about the draft revised guidelines. Then architectural review board makes a recommendation to planning commission. Planning commission holds a public hearing. They make any changes that they recommend. And then they forward a draft ordinance to new guidelines to council. And then council gets to review the guidelines. And we have a public hearing also at council. And then with hopes that council adopts a new set of guidelines. So I, I would think we'd start in, somewhere in January and probably end up late summer and finishing it.
Okay. Seeing no other questions, I'll open the public hearing. Anybody who'd like to address counsel on this matter is welcome to come forward. We ask that you come to the podium, give us your name and address, and please keep your remarks to five minutes or less. Welcome.
Thank you. We're the owners. Thanks for having us. We're Rob and Camille Damia. And Mary, you said our name right, so thank you. Not if he does. Imagine that while you were driving around town, you're pulled over by a police officer. "You didn't stop at the intersection," he says as he hands you a ticket. "I didn't know I had to stop," you respond, looking back for a sign. "We don't have a sign up," he acknowledges, "because citizens are supposed to go online to the city website and look up what the rules are for every intersection and drive accordingly." This would be ridiculous, right? But this is a metaphor for what happened to our family. Only this ticket comes with a $25,000 price tag. And yes, we did get multiple estimates and the average is $2,000 a window to replace them. And there's 20 windows. We purchased the house in April. The original owner knew that the house needed a lot of work, so we agreed on a price we could afford and got to work making the house beautiful and safe once again. The windows were particularly damaged. The wood had rotted and disintegrated to the touch in some places and others were warped and wouldn't even open. We hired an experienced inspector and he told us they could be replaced for about $200 each, but we ended up spending $400 each so that they could have a lifetime warranty, be double painted, and energy efficient. By nearly anyone's standards, 1007 Lafayette is now one of the best-looking and best-maintained homes on that street. But then we received a letter from the city stating that our windows were out of line with ARB guidelines and needed to be replaced wood for wood. This was a huge shock to us. In a city built in 1699, we had no idea that something from 1951 would be considered historic. And there were no historic signs saying as such. Far from colonial areas, our house backs up to a railroad track and our street is nearly all filled with college student rentals. If you drive along Lafayette, you'll note that not only is the architecture very eclectic, but none of the windows are uniform. There's vinyl, aluminum, storm windows, and wood. And nearly all of the wood windows honestly are rotting. Junkie trailers sit on some lots and there's nothing to alert anyone that the street requires approval for exterior work. At no point along the way in purchasing did anyone we know about worked about, know about this. Not our contractors, not the owner, the title company, et cetera. So once we got the letter, I did some research to see what the guidelines are and I went onto the city website. It took me down a trail of nine different links before I even found the guidelines. There are 171 pages of rules. While the wording favored a wood for wood standard, I did find passages that allowed for high-quality synthetic windows on a case-by-case basis and was able to document every standard mentioned that our windows met and/or exceeded. This decision, the decision by the ARB did not go in our favor, but it was not unanimous. And even those who voted for wood replacement appeared terribly conflicted about doing so. One particular sentiment was illuminated. Nearly all ARB members indicated an opinion that the city has been negligent in alerting citizens to the guidelines because, quote, "This keeps happening." It was the general belief that it is the responsibility of the city to inform the citizens in a more official manner. When you buy in a community within HOA, you get the documents before you close so that you know if you can meet community rules. It would be a simple process for the city to require title companies to provide a form upon receipt of contract saying as such. Then we could make an informed decision about whether or not we can afford to purchase it. If we had known that we'd be facing this expense, we would not have bought the house because we couldn't have afforded it. We are aware and happy that this particular council has taken interest in the issue of affordable housing and we submit that our case falls squarely under this umbrella. When we moved to Williamsburg two years ago, it caught our attention that there are many rundown and abandoned houses in the city. And now we understand why. The guidelines are so rigid that only those with a good deal of expendable money can afford to purchase and renovate them accordingly. I understand this for homes that were within blocks of Colonial Williamsburg and, or frequented by tourists. But again, we're talking about a house on the railroad tracks full of college students near a Walgreens and a Food Lion and blocks away from a commercial office building. We submit too that the city of Williamsburg is looking into ways to make rentals more affordable, but that's not going to be possible if landlords have to charge premium rents because of premium architectural standards in non-premium areas. We moved our four children to Williamsburg to escape the daily exposure to sex trafficking and highway accidents that were plaguing San Antonio. We sought an affordable welcoming community and we're pleased to find it in Williamsburg. We immediately got involved in our church, our rec center, and our daughter is a costumed interpreter at CW. This experience has devastated us both emotionally and will be financially crippling if we have to spend an additional $25,000, a full 10% of what we paid for the house, on inferior windows just because of a difference of material. That amount of money wipes out a college fund. It represents two and a half years of groceries. It pays for over three years of our daughter's prescriptions for her chronic illness, which clock in at $600 a month. In the words of a Realtor we know, the city of Williamsburg, they're just mean. I don't believe that the city is mean. I believe that you're here with hearts toward being public servants to your community. But hers is a sentiment honestly that I've encountered widely among citizens and contractors who'd have to deal with the city. Though well-intentioned, a ruling for replacement would be draconian. And in the words of one ARB member, it would be disproportionate to the situation, especially in light of how much we have improved the property. So I ask, which serves the people better? Impossible financial costs based on confusing and little-known standards or a material switch of vinyl to wood on a train-track street in order to check a bureaucratic box?
Thank you. Anybody else like to address counsel? Seeing no one, come back to my colleagues for discussion and close the public hearing.
Are we allowed to question the applicant?
You may.
Don't mind. I've a couple-
I don't have any questions for the applicant.
I've got some questions for applicant.
You might come back to the podium. So Mr. Zhang, could I have some questions, please?
Thank you for being here today and presenting your appeal before city council. I hear you, that's very emotional and I'm sure you would want to put this behind you no matter what. I did have a series of questions. So I did see you are James City County residents. Is that correct?
Yes, our primary home is there for now.
And this is for the purpose of rental, right?
For the time being.
For the time being. We have two sets of elderly parents. And one of the things that appealed to us about this house was there's a full basement that actually can be used as living quarters. And then there's the first floor and then there's a second floor. Because we have four kids and two sets of elderly parents who eventually might, so one of the sets might need to move in with us. We thought eventually that the house could potentially work as a residence for us as well. It's just, it's, it is a rental.
And the Realtor, when you hired them, the contractor did the work. They had no idea about the ARB guidelines?
We, this was not done through a Realtor. It was, we met this lady, we talked and kind of reached this without a Realtor involved.
Sure.
And the contractor, the contractor had made what I thought was a very practical statement. He said, "Well, Rob, look around the neighborhood and if, if the neighborhood has vinyl windows, it should be fine." And to me, that's kind of a common sense approach to everything because there's, there's, that, I can't even describe to you how eclectic that street is. There's vinyl windows, there's aluminum windows, there's wood windows, there's everything across the board. The storm windows, kind of everything across the board.
Right. And we are charged with analyzing whether ARB had made the right decision, not necessarily guidelines. But the one thing I did want to point out, I'm not necessarily a Realtor, but I do know that Virginia is a buyer's beware state. And in terms of notice, I think it's a great idea. I think ARB members had expressed that sentiment. I think that's something probably the state will have to take up and not us as a city, given just the powers of how state and local government are. That's not meant to be a lecture, obviously, but that does weigh into consideration. I did see that in your letter and wanted to make sure, you know, I was right. If you had any real estate background, you can, you can obviously correct me on that. So when you were given the notice of violation, I know you had read the guidelines. We're a small town. Obviously, you're from James City County. Did you try to reach out to city staff and just work out what exactly the guidelines may be before going before the ARB for the appeal?
It had already been done by the time, so we had replaced the windows because we didn't know that there were any guidelines. There was just no indication that somebody moving in would, would know that. It doesn't look like a historic area. All the windows are eclectic. So it, it literally did not dawn on us to go seeking something that we didn't even know existed. And so the first we heard from the city was once it was already done and they said that we needed to take it up with the ARB. So we followed exactly what the city asked us to do as soon as we knew to do it.
And even, even on the city website, there's not, like, there's a section there, I believe it's for, for, you know, residents or something like that. There's, there's really nothing there. There's no really warning. And, you know, the kind of, I pointed this out to the ARB. The threshold event in this whole scenario is when the deed transfer occurs. The deed transfer occurs, the city gets notice that the, that the property gets transferred to us. That's the threshold events when they know that happens. There's no mechanism, or at least there doesn't seem to be any kind of a mechanism, where when that happens, the resident, the new resident isn't notified that there's all of these sort of draconian kind of regs in regards to doing renovations and things like that. And if you even go to the city website where it has the breakdown on zoning and things like that, it doesn't even say restriction, it just says ARB 3. I don't even know what ARB 3 was. I didn't even know what an architectural review board was until after the fact.
Yeah, we did dig pretty deep to find what we're looking for. And so the ARB, the wide opinion among the ARB was that it really is incumbent, it's incumbent upon the city to at some point, whether it's the closing or once a title company receives a contract, to let them know, as an HOA would if you were buying into an HOA. If you're buying into guidelines, you need to know those guidelines before.
Well, those are declaration of restrictive covenants. This is general city zoning authority. But I, I'm totally sympathetic to your point.
Yeah.
I'm not practicing attorney yet. But I do know, I do think in the deed of transfer- But I do know, I do think in the deed of transfer, they do say there's a buyer's beware clause. You agree to buy as is, and that's something maybe the state legislature has to take up in the future. But in terms of ARB regulations, we're just here on the architectural regulations here. I, I was just looking to see if you had made good faith efforts or reasonable efforts to reach out to Ms. Carolyn Murphy and Ms. Erin. They don't bite, from what I know.
Once we knew we did everything they asked us to do as far as our process in going through it, we just had done the windows before we knew to do that. It literally didn't occur us, occur to us to reach out to the city for something historical when it's built in 1951.
Between the two of us, we've lived in Pennsylvania, California, Texas.
Colorado.
Colorado, the Washington DC area. I've never, never run into anything like this, never.
Yeah.
And, and it's, so it was a big shock, you know? This whole process has been a big shock, especially when you, when you buy a property, you'd go, oh, wow, there's no HOA, because, you know, where we moved from in Texas, HOAs are kind of the big gatekeepers for this sort of thing. And there's no, well, there's no HOA, I guess we should be okay. Particularly when you look around the area and how eclectic it is, and there's commercial buildings, and there's, there's, you know, all these different types of windows around here. I think most people with common sense would say, hey, we should be good to go.
Right. Lafayette itself, and I'm sure y'all are all very familiar, it's an incredibly eclectic street. It's, it's not uniform whatsoever. So there's nothing even visually that would trigger a citizen from knowing, hey, there's something, somebody you need to contact.
And I don't think it's intuitive either that somebody would think, oh, wow, a house built in 1951 is historic, and then we found out that anything that's 50 years old is historic. I just turned 50 this year.
You're historic.
My kids think I'm a dinosaur, but I'm not historic, I can tell you that.
Well, thank you. That's all the questions I have, Ms. Maslin.
Does anybody else have any questions for the applicant before, do you, I mean, just so we don't have to make them get up and sit down, get up and sit down?
Right. Just, just the clarification that it's currently being rented now, and you made the comment at the beginning that it's a street filled with college students. So I'm guessing that you all are renting to college students as well?
Yes, we have four William and Mary students in there right now, and, but our plan, our long-term plan, because of the nature of the basement being livable, that is our plan to potentially use it for personal use in the future.
Okay.
Well, I'd open another bag, but I won't address that now. And just to say that I think part of the eclectic nature of Lafayette, the reason that it's probably still eclectic is because some of the ARB restrictions that keep it that way. I bought a house in an ARB area and didn't know about the, the window replaid. That was the first thing I wanted to do, and I just made a trip down to the city, and they provided me the information. Fortunately, I found out, out before. And you mentioned San Antonio, and I'm going to San Antonio next week for a conference, and I went on the website, and I noticed they have a number of historic areas as well spread out throughout the city. So it's all over the place.
Well, San Antonio, the interesting thing about San Antonio is that the historic area is extremely concentrated. Out in the suburbs, out in the burbs where most people live, there's none of that, really. It's all about, HOAs really kind of govern this sort of thing.
Yeah, it's very concentrated to downtown for any historic district, and you would clearly know, like, I could list off all the historic areas for you because they're, they're pretty obvious.
Yeah. Well, ours is pretty much downtown, too, so.
Mr. Maslin.
Yeah, so I've heard two different things. I've heard you say double pain, I've heard planning say single pain.
They're double pain.
The old ones were single pain, the ones we replaced are double pain.
So there is an energy improvement there?
Yes.
Yes, definitely. And they have lifetime warranties.
The technician from ET Lawson, who did the update for the, there was no AC system in there, so we, we put in some mini split, a mini split system in there so that the students could be comfortable. The technician from ET Lawson said, "If the windows are getting replaced, this is going to have a massive improvement." Okay, that's what was his words, not mine. We can sit there and talk about whether it's 15% or 7% or whatever, but he said, and I'm, he works in that industry all the time, he says, "If the windows are replaced, then that's going to have a significant improvement on them."
And in terms of the contractor, was this a licensed contractor?
We use Window World for this.
Window World.
Are they a Class A or a Class C, or do you know?
It's, I believe, I don't know, I don't know what the classification is on them, but I know that they've done about 4,000 sets of high-water area, from what I understand, and I think they've done, they've done a lot of jobs here in Williamsburg, from what I understand.
So if they've done a lot of jobs in Williamsburg, I would think they wouldn't be surprised about this requirement.
I can only say what we knew, and we weren't alerted that there was.
But the contractor, I mean, the contractor didn't?
The contractor said that, because he looked at Lafayette itself, and he's looking at the vinyl and the aluminum, and he's like, I don't see where there would be an issue here, these are all really different. So it kind of sounded like the final word to us.
But so in your letter, you said that even the ARB noted that the city has been negligent in notice. So negligent has legal meaning, what, and is there something in the minutes that say, or are the ARB saying that?
I don't know what the minutes say, but that's actually, we, that's actually, both ARB meetings that we came up in front of, that was a sentiment that came out, is that it should be the responsibility, they're saying, why, why isn't this? And, and they looked at the city representatives, and said, why isn't it that people are being informed about this? And the answer was that, well, some Realtors know, we tell the Realtors, but telling your Realtor is also dependent upon that Realtor being good at what they're doing, and in a more, they were in agreement in the ARB that a more official way to do it is to have the title, a document at title, which is where you're signing documents, have this kind of document present there so that the buyer is signing and knows exactly what they're getting into.
But nobody on ARB used the term negligent?
They used the word negligent, or it was, that was the sentiment described. I honestly can't remember if they said negligence, but I didn't put anything in quotes. I was expressing for sure what the sentiment was, is that the city should be notifying people of this. Because if you come in and you haven't lived in Williamsburg for 40 years, it really isn't apparent.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
We'll come back to, we'll come back to you, Mr. Zhang, I think you were, oh, Mr. Pons. Before we do that, may I ask the city attorney another question?
You're the, you're the mayor.
What is the city's authority regarding title documents in real estate transactions?
The property owner has an affirmative responsibility when they have a plan for the property to ensure that the property plans are in compliance with the zoning ordinance. We do not receive notice of title transfers from the courthouse. When we need to update our tax records, we have an employee who goes and searches through all of the records. So there's no easy process for receiving notice and sending a packet to someone who has purchased a property in the city of Williamsburg. There's no legal obligation to do that.
And is there any ability of the city to require that there be a title transfer-related document signed?
The title transfer prop, the title transfer rules are governed by the state, not by the city. The city doesn't have any implicit authority in the state code to require that. City council could require that the staff take on the affirmative obligation of going and searching the title records every day to find the title transfers that happen in the city, but that would be a fairly onerous task.
Mayor, just for clarification, after reading the packet and the material from the ARB appeal, I did talk with Derek, our assessor, and asked him about his process, because he's the first person in the city staff that has contact with transfers. And he actually goes out and inspects each property that's sold within a few months of the transfer. And he and I talked about implementing a process by which he would put a postcard in the mailbox when he goes out to do that revised sketch, because he has some questions that he would like the new owners to answer regarding the inside of the house that he can't see from the outside. And then on the opposite side, we could put something like, did you know, and include some basic stuff about that particular property from the property record card, such as the zoning district, if they're in the ARB zone, if they're in some other protection district related to Chesapeake Bay, whether or not they need approval to take down their trees, those kinds of things that are not inherently known, but certainly fall into the categories Mr. Zhang pointed out as buyer beware.
Thank you. I think that's a good step forward. So to the question at hand, I do believe that the ARB fulfilled their requirement and, and accurately adjudicated on this matter. So I will uphold, I will vote to uphold city council, ARB's recommendation. Aside from that, I'm not unsympathetic to the plight that you all have. You know, and if this were your primary residence, I'd be even more sympathetic. But since it's a for-profit enterprise, I think you have options. And, and it's, to that, I wish you the best. Moving forward, I'm glad to hear that we are slated to begin the design guideline review. I think it's important, because there are issues of affordability and first-time home buyers and, you know, those types of issues that I think can be addressed when we talk about these standards. So I look forward to that discussion in the months to come.
In court, there's always, when you try to bring up a case to the highest court of the nation, they always try to find sympathetic plaintiffs. And this, this is, this one comes with a mixed bag, because as the city attorney has stated, there is a buyer's beware clause that any purchaser should know. When I purchased my house, I was aware of that. But that's because I was able to afford the services of an attorney, and that might not go for everyone, but for this case, it seems reasonable that that effort may have been made. Good effort, research, you know, we have an open line communication with our planning department. If you had any questions about architectural standards, pick up the phone and call Carolyn. This is for anyone who's here in the city listening to this today, because it could be tricky. And sometimes for attorneys, that's our job, we have to sift through these regulations. I am also aware that city council, by the Commonwealth of Virginia, has brought, has given city councils broad legislative prerogatives where we have to analyze not only our boards and commissions' appeals, but also we take into factors very rarely on equity and public policy, and a lot of legal terminology. But I think we are in a reasonable position to also consider outside factors aside from just ARB. And what I find here is, with $25,000 to replace windows, and given the ever-changing nature of that particular area, when I say particular, as applied to that area, not Burns Lane, not Griffin Avenue, not North Boundary Street, but to that particular area, and because we have a changing comprehensive plan and slated regulatory changes to our design review, they still have to wait a year to appeal, even if we had changed our new design review guidelines. Is that correct? Or can they appeal again once we, let's say we?
Who appealing?
If we, if the city, you know, updates the design review guidelines, and for some reason they allow the vinyl windows, they wouldn't be able to appeal until a year later from this date, is that correct?
They have 30 days to appeal a decision of city council.
To circuit court, I mean, after this, today, if we had to.
Yes.
Yeah. So there is a little bit of a lag with there. So I think $25,000 is a shock to the conscience, and I do think city council is empowered on an as-applied basis to overturn ARB. So therefore, I do find that the ARB members have made an error in judgment, and I vote to, with the property owners.
And just to be clear, we're not actually voting at this point, you're expressing, each of you are expressing your intention?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
And I would just like to thank the mayor for making sure that we all realize the question before us, which is to determine, as I understand it, whether the ARB applied the guidelines correctly. And based on what the guidelines are today, I do believe that, that they applied them correctly, so I will be supporting the ARB. And to Mr. Zhang's point, as far as planning commission and co-compliance, I found that there's always an open door, whether it be anything regarding ARB or the rental districts that we have in the city, and the inspections and the guidelines that accompany them as well. So, thank you.
Yeah, I would like to move that we take no action on this to give counsel time to review the ordinance approved by a previous council.
Sorry, approve, review the ordinance approved?
This ordinance that was approved by a previous council.
This ordinance being the design review guidelines?
For, for this particular area.
Do we have any obligation to render a decision within a certain amount of time?
Mr. Maslin, are you making a motion?
I made a motion.
Yeah, but nobody seconded it yet.
Well, that's my next question. Is there a second to the motion?
Wait, what's the?
What Mr. Maslin is suggesting is that city council not make a decision on the ARB rule at this time until we've undergone a complete review of the design review guidelines. That's the ordinance that he's suggesting that was made by a prior council that we should review first. Is that correct?
Correct. By review, just have more time to review it, or are you meant to, you know, begin the process of updating it?
That would be open-ended.
Would be a motion to postpone indefinitely.
Until it comes back to council.
Is there a second?
So what exactly happens if, if we postpone this?
There is no decision with respect to the appeal, so the appeal continues until city council brings it back.
How many times can you postpone it?
Can postpone it indefinitely. The, the guidelines for counties is 12 months. You have to make a decision with respect to a zoning issue in 12 months. So you can postpone it for up to a year. There's a question about whether or not that applies to cities, but that's the advice that I've given counsel before.
So Ted, your suggestion is that we would postpone this so that the update will take within Ms. Murphy's timeline, six months, update it, and then come back here and apply to new design guidelines?
If, if it changes.
But that's, but they, they will have to go through ARB, because the ARB made, will make the decision based on this existing design review.
Basically, we're stalling enforcement.
What are the implications, Ms. City Attorney, on?
They would have a pending appeal. Until city council renders a decision, we would not move forward with enforcement.
Well, how about with other, any particular enforcement?
I mean, I think that what you would need to do, if you chose to go down this path, would be to institute a zoning in progress, which would prohibit the department from taking future applications until this whole issue is resolved, because there would be no way for us to act on them, knowing the council's disposition on the change.
So nobody could make an application to the ARB?
Not regarding.
Or windows.
Exactly.
Well, but can we make this specific to windows on Lafayette in this area?
But then you have Nelson that's down there, and Delaware, and all the other streets that are.
That'd be problematic.
It, it would certainly cause problems.
That, that would be, that will be a legal challenge. That will have some merits.
So we, we have a motion, is there a second? Okay, the motion does not go forward.
Mr. Mayor, I'll propose an alternate motion.
Well, has everybody spoken yet?
Well, I mean, I'll yell to the vice mayor.
Or to the mayor.
I, I haven't said anything yet. If I get to speak, please.
Sure. There's always discussion after a motion. But go ahead. My motion would be to support the, the recommendation here, but, but.
Oh, well, what I was gonna, can I ask another question?
Certainly.
I, I believe that the ARB appropriately applied the guidelines to the application. The question I have is, do we have the flexibility to put a timeline on the change to the windows? If, if, in, in this case, since we're so close to the time that design review guidelines are going to, this is another take on Mr. Maslin's approach. If, if we're going to be looking at the design review guidelines coming up, there's no guarantee that they're going to change, but if they did change to allow the type of window that was installed, could we postpone the enforcement until after that time? Or is that not?
We have done that in the past. It, it has caused problems in at least one case in the past. My advice would be that would not be a very long timeline, but certainly we could enter into a settlement agreement where if city council changed the guidelines, then they could apply the new guidelines to the property. If not, then they would have to replace the windows. But we could certainly settle a zoning case with respect to the property flexibly.
And that way, we wouldn't hold up any other zoning applications or ARB window applications applications in the area. But there's still no guarantee, I mean, if the guidelines stay the same, the windows would then have to be replaced at that point?
Yes.
So could it be conceivable that two doors down, somebody says, huh, slap up some windows right now?
It would certainly not be the normal practice. And, but, but it has happened in the past that someone has replaced materials with materials that are not permitted by the ARB, and they have had a longer period of time to make that replacement, recognizing that that is a significant cost, and recognizing that the end of a court process would be months away, and recognizing that the court is likely to provide additional time for that person or the property owners to replace the windows because of the cost or whatever the change that needs to be made. So that is recognizing the reality of the time that it takes for one of these cases to make its way through the court system.
And again, so I'm, I'm not unsympathetic, but I'm, but I'm, I am very sympathetic to the fact that if we start to make unique maneuvers in this situation, it causes us to set a precedence that, that we will not be able to control moving forward. And, and, you know, you can apply that to any number of situations throughout the city, not just design guidelines. And so I'm very apprehensive to, to, to enter into some sort of special circumstances for this situation. You know, I could go through this and, and start, you know, I think windows of the world, you know, failed these, these, their customers here. I just know in good faith that they, they knew better, but they wanted to sell some windows. And I think that's your biggest argument. It's not with the city. And so I, I just, I'd hate for us to get into this type of, you know, creating a spec, special circumstances. It's because it's unenforceable moving forward. And other, with other, you know, potential things that might pop up.
Your motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that City Council uphold the architectural review board's decision to deny the replacement of wood windows with vinyl windows because the replacement windows do not meet the design guidelines.
Second, Ms. Felico?
Mr. Maslin?
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey?
Aye.
Mayor Freiling?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pons?
Aye.
Mr. Zhang?
Aye.
Okay, that upholds the ARB decision. This takes us to our fourth public hearing to consider appointments, reappointments to the Williamsburg James City County School Board. Ms. Shelton, do you want to just give us a little background, and the audience too, on, on this process, since it is a unique process to this board or commission appointment?
So the city appoints its school board members. They are not elected. And the process for appointing school board members is that the city advertises the position as available and accepts applications for the position. Up and until the conclusion of a public hearing, a nomination for that position or an application can be received. City Council is required to hold a public hearing where individuals can either nominate someone for the position, or someone can speak as to support of an already existing applicant for the position. The City Council may not vote on this today. They have to wait seven days to vote. That advertisement was in fact put in paper 10 days before the meeting, more than 10 days before the meeting, but at least 10 days before the meeting. And so now City Council needs to open a public hearing for that purpose. And at the conclusion of the public hearing, then I think that the schedule would be that the City Council would vote on this in December.
Okay. Any questions before I open the public hearing? Okay, anybody who'd like to address counsel on this matter? Apparently we have somebody rather here. Please come forward, give us your name and address, and if you could keep your remarks to five minutes or less, we'd appreciate that. Welcome, Ms. Hummel.
Hello, everyone. I am Julie Hummel. I live at 130 Yorkshire in Williamsburg, Virginia. I have served as one of Williamsburg's two representatives on the WJCC School Board since January of 2016. My term will expire in December of 2019, and I would be delighted to be reappointed for a second term beginning in January 2020. It has been a privilege and an honor to serve as your representative. During my tenure, I'm proud of many board accomplishments, but I wanted to just mention three major ones that apply to the city. First of all, I'm very proud of the hiring of our current superintendent, Dr. Owen Heron. Dr. Heron has ushered in a new era of transparency and trust within our school system and has been instrumental in the developing of a strategic plan that places the education of our youngest citizens front and center. As a school board member, I served on the selection committee to choose Dr. Heron. The second accomplishment is the building of a much-needed fifth elementary, middle school, James Blair, which is located in the city. This new middle school alleviated the overcrowded situation that existed in another one of our city middle schools, Berkeley Middle School. Berkeley had been over 100% capacity for many years, and so we were very proud that we were able to build James Blair with the funds from the county and the city. And it is now a state-of-art middle school in the heart of the Richmond Road corridor and has played a key part in revitalizing our downtown area. Third, the building of the auxiliary gym for Lafayette High School. Most high school students who live in the city of Williamsburg attend Lafayette High School. As our system's oldest high school, it was the only high school without an auxiliary or double gym. This created an equity issue among our high school athletes, and so we negotiated with the city and county to add the auxiliary gym back into the CIP so it could be built and our city high school students could compete on an even playing field. During my tenure, I've held several important committee positions, which allow me to learn more about the complexities of the school board and its various committees and board positions and responsibilities. My first two years on the board, I served on the board of New Horizons Regional Education Center and the CTE Committee. For those of you who don't know, the New Horizons is responsible for the CTE and workforce training for students, along with the Governor's School and our Region Center for Autism. The CTE Committee tracks the training of our students, that our CTE's training, and oversees the federal funds that we receive. In my third year, I assumed the leadership position of parliamentarian as well as serving on the Policy Committee, which is one of our key leadership committees. This current year, my fourth year, I continued to serve on the Policy Committee and also assumed the leadership position of Vice Chair of the School Board. If reappointed, I will serve in this capacity again next year. For the past four years, I've also served as the Appointed School Board Representative on the Board of the WJCC Foundation, which raises money for innovative teaching grants. Finally, looking ahead, I would like to continue to serve on the board for an additional one term for four years because continuity of experience is really important on the school board. It's something, it, it takes you about a year to figure out what you're doing and then to understand how everything works. So I've had the privilege of working with Kira Cook. We work really well together as the two city reps, and there are still some important initiatives that are ahead of us that I want to maintain some involvement in. One is the creation of a budget that will allow WJCC to continue to attract the best and brightest teachers in the area so we can continue to teach our most valuable assets. I also want us to continue to pay close attention to the equity gaps and achievement among our subgroup population. Williamsburg students are heavily represented in these subgroups, so it's important that we keep that need front and center. Along with the need for subgroup and equity, closing that achievement gap, I would also want us to be monitoring the progress of the need for 10th elementary school, especially since our city school, Matthew Whaley, is one of the most overcrowded schools at over 100% capacity for the past year, and it, it is currently in our proposed CIP to design a 10th elementary school in fiscal year 21 and have it constructed in fiscal year 22. And finally, monitoring the progress of Lafayette High School's expansion. Building 900 will be available for design and construction to facilitate the addition of eight new classrooms. It is currently in our proposed CIP for design in fiscal year 21 and construction in fiscal year 23. So in closing, I want to thank you for the opportunity to represent Williamsburg for these past four years. And if it pleases City Council, I would be honored to continue representing the city for one additional four-year term.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel.
Thank you.
Would anybody else like to address counsel? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing.
Mayor, I do want to point out, just for the record, that we did receive three applications for the position. One from Nina Simone, one from Thomas Lu, and of course, from Ms. Hummel to reinstate her application.
And so counsel will be considering this matter at a later date and voting on it at our next meeting. Okay. Any other discussion? Wow, we're done with the public hearings. Okay, that takes us to the reports. First is monthly financial statement, October 2019. Anything you want to highlight there, Mr. Trivett?
You know, I talked to Ms. Dameron about this, and the report is pretty consistent with what we would expect. She's monitoring a few discrepancies and looking into the origins of some differences in monies, but nothing that are significant. If you'd like to hear from her, she's welcome to come to the podium.
Questions from Ms. Dameron?
I had a couple.
Okay. Ms. Dameron, would you?
Yeah. So, look, it's on the first page, looking at the total general property taxes, actual through October this year, of about $788,000 versus same time last year, 500 and, excuse me, $459,000. Any comments there?
Yes. You'll, you'll recall, we're slightly ahead in our real estate, even though it's not due to December 1st compared to the previous year. If you recall, our budget anticipated, or we budgeted 4%, and we will, we ended up with a 6% increase. We'll be coming back after the first half collections to consider appropriations for initiatives that we were not able to fund in the original budget. So it, I'm not surprised to see that increase there. And then our current personal property tax is performing slightly ahead of where we were last year. Business property tax is just slightly behind, but not enough for me to be concerned. That's, could likely be a timing difference.
Thank you. So on page three, administration of justice, this is under general fund expenditures. So this year, our percent of budget spent is 22.76%. Same time last year was 15.60%. Anything trending there that we should be concerned about?
If you'll look at the budget, we had about $440,000 budget in the previous year to $471,000 this year. So that's pretty consistent with the uptick that I would anticipate in spending at this time. But nothing, nothing there that is standing out that may indicate that we would exceed the budget for this year.
Are there additional costs there in terms of review of, of video, you know, from the cameras worn, worn by police? Are we seeing an uptick on that?
One of the things that is included in that grouping, it would be the Commonwealth attorney. And yes, we did include some additional positions for that review. So that would be part of the increase.
If you remember, Mr. Maslin, when we did the budget for this fiscal year, we did receive a request from the Commonwealth attorney for additional funding to help with that.
And then finally, under education, we're showing 29.32% versus last year, 36.83%.
Anything? I think, I think that is just a, a timing. There's nothing there that, that would alert me to being off.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Dameron. Monthly departmental operating reports. Mr. Trivett, anything you'd like to highlight?
Just two things quickly. The GIO report that we've talked about numerous times, well, we decided to postpone until next month because of the volume of business on this month's agenda. But we did want to take just a minute to update you on a project that we discussed about this time last year. And so I'm gonna ask Mr. Witt to come talk to us about that.
Thank you.
Welcome, Mr. Witt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. I'm delighted to share with you, as Mr. Trivett said last year, about this time, about a month earlier, we were talking about doing lighting in downtown to help with vibrancy. And we settled upon the concept of lighting the large tree at the intersection of Boundary Street and Prince George. And we had, oops, we went out to bid for that lighting contract, and Public's work staff, who's, who's always wonderful working with my office, helped us through this process. And after, and this, this tree actually is on, on William &amp; Mary property, the College of William &amp; Mary property. So we worked with the William &amp; Mary arborist and talked to him exactly what kind of clamps he was comfortable with going on the tree, and the tree would still be protected when you're dropping electricity there as well. And so we're ready to proceed. So this tree will be lit for this holiday season. So we're pleased this is not the exact tree. This is a concept of what a lighted tree looks like. But you know, that tree does overhang that, that extra-large intersection that we have trouble encouraging pedestrians to cross, and we really want to encourage them to cross that street and enjoy both blocks of Prince George Street and both, both areas of downtown. And I think lighting this tree will do that. So delighted to report that to you.
And this will be in addition to the trees along the streets, Kate?
Yes, and I'm glad you asked about that. That's my next slide. So you'll remember, last year, our concept was while we were bidding out the, the larger tree to be lighted, we worked with the landscape department to put evergreens in the pots that usually have the, the spring, summer, and fall flowers, to use them during the holiday season. And we lit those with battery-operated lights, and thanks to many, many staff people went out there and we would turn them on, we turned them on to get them started. But because they were battery-operated, that was an intensive process for us to check them and, and keep up with that. So we had a great idea to involve our businesses downtown in this, and we are asking businesses downtown to adopt a tree. And so they each adopt a tree, and they'll decorate it presumably to represent their business or their interest around the holidays. We will have uniform signage on each of the potted trees that indicate who has adopted the tree. And we'll encourage through social media, people to come take selfies with them and vote for their favorite tree. Another exciting part of this is, is we've ordered enough trees this year to go all the way to the deli. So it will go from, from Henry Street at Prince George, all the way up to Scotland Street, and then turn that corner to the deli area, which has been our goal, is to connect those two activity nodes of the city and get people to, customers to, to enjoy that area. So about half the trees are adopted, so about 12 remain. So we're giving the businesses adjacent to the trees another couple days to select a tree, and then we'll open it to all downtown businesses or interested parties.
And if anybody's interested in pursuing this adoption process, contact your office.
Yes, please call my office at 757-220-6104. We'd love to talk to you.
Questions coming?
Look forward to seeing the results.
So any design guidelines for those, decorating those trees?
So the, the trees are on city right of way. And so there is some, we have some guidelines. It, it needs to be proper and not obscene, and be appropriate to, to the holiday season.
The city gets to do what it wants.
Pardon?
The city gets to do what it wants.
Thank you.
And just to add on to that, there's also going to be some additional decoration with the windows, I believe, down in Merchant Square, correct?
Yes. And I know Jeff Duncan is here, but Merchant Square Association did a very successful Halloween window decoration contest. And, and I've, I've seen some of the winners and with some of their plaques. So they're doing the same for the holidays. So we encourage everyone to come downtown and take a look at the truly amazing creativity of our merchants down there and what they have in their shop windows.
Thank you.
Also have an ice skating rink for another year. So lots going on. Please come downtown. Oh, and this is the, if you're interested in knowing exactly where the trees are, the white spaces are the trees that are still available. The yellow, as you will see, have been adopted. So again, let, let us know if you're interested.
Thank you, Ms. Witt. Okay. City manager report?
Um, there's a, thank you.
Well, I have one question on monthly department operating.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
So on Public Works, could we get an update on the discussions with VDOT and the Rumble Strip on Monticello as we leave the city?
Yes, sir. We did make contact with the local residency, and they will be doing some work there. Not a complete overlay on the pavement, but they're doing some patching along there in that stretch there next to the, as you're outbound, Monticello, towards the light, they will be doing some work in there. They didn't give me a timetable, but it has to be pretty soon because of the weather.
Did they commit to this year, do you think?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
And just for clarification, the, the segment of Monticello Avenue from Trayburn to Ironbound Road?
Right.
Is, that's in the city, is not a city-maintained street. That is controlled by VDOT.
Correct.
So, thank you, Mr. Maslin. City attorney report?
Nothing.
Okay. Unfinished business. We have presentation of the updated Tourism Development Grant Review Committee funding recommendations.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of City Council. We discussed this at your work session Tuesday, where we gave an overview of the Tourism Development Grant updated recommendation, given the removal of Goodwin Square from the application pile. To remind the public and you of where we've been and where we're going, City Council's Tourism Development Fund, you'll see here, the purpose is to increase patronage to restaurants, attractions, hotels, and events in the city. The eligible expenses are infrastructure for tourism products, tourism products themselves, placemaking, placemaking projects and events, EDA projects and programs, and, and some admin expenses. I do want to note that the, there's a, there's a couple of year story of how we got here, but everyone will remember Senate Bill 942 became state code, and there's an additional 1% sales tax in the greater Williamsburg area. Half of those funds are channeled by statute to the Williamsburg Tourism Council. area. Half of those funds are channeled by statute to the Williamsburg Tourism Council to target up of tourism representatives from the region, and is outlined by the state code. And they handle our marketing. So they do all the marketing to attract more visitors to Williamsburg with half of that 1% sales tax. The other 1% is returned to the locality where it was collected. And the city of Williamsburg, on your authority, chose to use it to invest in tourism and try to improve our tourism product for the experience and to attract people here and keep them here longer and keep them coming back. So that is the genesis of this. So this, your policy does not include marketing because that's handled at a regional level. This is about the tourism product, the placemaking, and the infrastructure. So we had a discussion about each of the updated recommendations. As I said, with the Goodwin Square proposal being removed, we, we discussed each of these, and y'all had some comments and some thoughts about it. So I'm suggesting we go through them one by one today. I'll remind you of the staff recommendation, and then you can approve them one by one if you'd like.
So we're going to go through, you're going to go through a review of each project, and then we will vote on that project, and then move to the next project and vote on that project?
If that's your pleasure. Yes.
That would be our preference.
I think that makes sense.
And we are going to talk about items that the tourism development grant review committee reviewed but did not recommend. We still need to vote on those.
No, this will only include the list of projects recommended for funding.
Okay. I just want to make sure everybody's comfortable with that because it's, council's prerogative to-
To change that.
Right. So it is, is everybody comfortable with that?
Yeah. And also, we've got the option of not having to use all the money this year.
Correct. So I'll remind you, in the larger picture, this proposal, this recommendation today does spend all the funds in fiscal, in this fiscal.
So I just want to make sure, is everybody comfortable with not reviewing the ones that the committee did not recommend for funding? Okay. So we'll go through these one by one. I believe we're going to start with the ones that have any connection to Colonial Williamsburg, because I, as an employee of that organization, will not participate in that discussion or that vote. I'll turn the gavel over to Mr. Pons for that period of time. Once we move through the Colonial Williamsburg related projects, then I'll come back in to participate.
I should wake up there. So, Mr. Witt, if you want to go ahead and begin with the first one here.
Sure. So the first one is about the three downtown parking lots and the improvements to be made to them. This was an application that was submitted through the process, but was not recommended by funding by the committee initially, because there was concern that a management and lease agreement did, did not exist on how this would happen. So to remind you, these parking lots are owned by the Colonial Williamsburg Foundation. This proposal is that, that the city funds would be used to improve that these parking lots, which have a lot of deferred maintenance on them. So our updated recommendation is that city council approve $750,000 in this cycle to be used by the city to improve the downtown parking lots if a management and lease agreement is executed between, between the city and Colonial Williamsburg for how that maintenance and use of the parking lots will be dumped between the property owner and the city. And we've put a deadline as staff there at the end of this fiscal year, is what we're suggesting, that that would need to happen since this is the cycle of the grant. And we, we have the correct map today. I'm sorry, Tuesday, you had a different map. This is the map that shows you the three parking lots in play. They're commonly known as P2, P4, and P5. P2 is behind the William &amp; Mary bookstore. P4 is behind the ticket office, and P5 is in the Barrett's Mellow Mushroom parking lot.
And so we know that Colonial Williamsburg has a desire to, to have these parking, parking lots renovated, because they submitted an application to TDF funds. So clearly, as you pointed out, what we're doing is we're going to wait till we have some sort of management agreement, lease agreement with them before we release these funds. And so no money goes out until we have that agreement, and then we can move forward with that.
And further clarification, it would be the city using these funds to upgrade, to upgrade these parking lots?
Thank you. Appreciate your presentation. Just wanted to praise the vice mayor for all his efforts to spearheading a solution beyond Goodwin Square, which was controversial. But I think everybody here is committed to making sure that we find a way to refurbish these parking lots. I think Chris Karachi, when he presented all these recommendations months before, based on his experience in Disney, is that a lot of visitors will base their first impressions on certain things like parking lots. And with the, the condition that we have with these three lots is unacceptable. And I'm glad that both Colonial Williamsburg and the city can come together to make sure that we can come to the decision. Again, I just want to reiterate, I'd be more comfortable with these funds being parked in the TDF or the tourism fund, not necessarily, I don't know if that's a specific staff recommendation, but I know there was some mention about moving it to the CIP fund. I'd be more comfortable with the TDF fund. Thank you.
And I would reiterate what Mr. Zhang said, that I would be more comfortable with the funds staying in the TDF until the time that the lease agreement is approved. Because if there is no agreement by June the 30th, then those funds would be available for another project and for another grant application, correct?
Yes, ma'am. Exactly. And as we discussed Tuesday, finance director Dameron has said that's, that's entirely possible to do, and, and we'll do that at your direction.
And, and I appreciate you adding a deadline in there. And I think June 30th goes in with our fiscal year and, and also with the award cycle. So I, I'm in favor of that as well.
Do we have any drawings that show what the improvements would be and how we came up with the $750,000?
We, we did ask the public works department to do some initial investigation into that. And they engaged a contractor briefly to help us with some very simple designs. There's still a lot of work, design work to do to get to something where we could start construction. But by doing that, we were able to estimate how many new spaces we could create with reconfiguring the lots, as well as the cost to do upgrades to stormwater and lighting, and of course, resurface them. So the $750,000 estimate, we think, is pretty close. We were glad to see that the actual resurfacing work came in less than expected. But the $750,000 actually allows us to install hardware and software should we decide to make these paid lots.
Now, I would just add that clearly Colonial Williamsburg had done, I would think they did some investigations to determine what the value of that resurfacing and renovations and that, because that was the number that they asked for with their application.
So how much of the $750,000 do we think is really the deferred maintenance component?
I, I want to say, and Mr. Clayton, you can help me out, but it seemed like we, our estimate to refurbish the lots, install new lighting, was around $500,000 of that cost. Now, how much of that could we attribute to deferred maintenance? I don't know. That's just our estimate for bringing the lots up to a city standard.
So has there been any request of CW that they actually have some skin in the game and actually participate financially in this?
They have not offered anything beyond their original application. What they have said to us in many meetings to discuss the possibility of this, some of which include the vice mayor, is that they see these three lots as assets. They see them as assets not only in terms of physical property that they own, but also as potential revenue producing assets, should they decide to start charging for parking on their own. So what they see as their skin in the game, if you will, is the allowance of the city to have a lease and forego control over those lots for a pretty lengthy period of time.
And I agree with the concept of keeping the funds in the TDF.
Well, I'll make a motion. Mr. Mayor, I move that city council approve a $750,000 grant in FY '20 to be used by the city to improve downtown parking lots if a management and lease agreement is executed between the city and Colonial Williamsburg by June 30th, 2020.
Second.
Ms. Felico?
Mr. Maslin?
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey?
Aye.
Mayor Freyli?
Epstein.
Vice Mayor Pons?
Aye.
Mr. Zhang?
Aye.
Next one, please.
Ready for the next one. The next one, this is the Henry Street restrooms, which are owned by Colonial Williamsburg, but are, as you know, heavily used by non-ticket holders as well as ticket holders to Colonial Williamsburg. The recommendation here is that city council approve a $350,000 grant for the Colonial Williamsburg Foundation to renovate these restrooms. It would be paid as a reimbursement after the renovation occurs. And the restrooms, there would be a contingent that restrooms must remain open to the general public, and a timeline that the renovations must be completed by December 30th of 2020.
Mr. Zhang? I just quick comment. I know you've mentioned this before, but I'm sure people in the audience might be wondering, why would it take $350,000 to repair bathrooms?
Yes. So these bathrooms are quite dated. I think a large part of the, entirely fixtures redone in there. But a large part of the cost is to make them ADA compliant, which, to make them accessible with the-
The ADA compliance requires that much money?
Well, that's not the only cost, but it is a large cost of it to make them ADA compliant. But the entire, all the fixtures and everything, it's a gutting of the, of the building to make new fixtures.
Thank you.
But I think important that is, what, part of this agreement is, we're not going to write them a check and then have them do the work.
Right.
They're going to have to submit the invoices back to us, just to keep it, you know.
It'll be reviewed by staff, everything.
That's correct.
One thing that we would ask you to think about as you're deliberating on this one is, the staff recognized $350,000 was a large sum of money for renovation. And so what we wanted to do is make sure that that is actually the price. So as Mr. Pons said, we're not just writing a check. They've got to prove that that's expense for renovating. But what we would like to, to suggest is that you also include language that if they decide to do something other than purely renovate, should they decide to reconstruct bathrooms in another location, that that needs to come back and be considered further.
I think, well, I think that's important, because if they do get into the building and decide that, you know, there's greater value in demoing and building anew, then, then that might change the conversation.
Sure. And then that's not to say that the staff or the committee would find less value in that. It just means that it changes the application substantially from renovation to reconstruction or new construction, and would warrant further review.
Well, and I would hope that as they get into the review of the bathrooms, that it wouldn't be, well, let's just take the $350,000 and renovate where the bathrooms would really need to be reconstructed. And I hope it would be the, the best use of the money for, for the best use of the, the property. Because I know there's been discussions too on expanding the, the bathrooms as opposed to just gutting and, and building what's there. And I brought up too that with the renovation, perhaps the redo of the parking lots, that that could impact what happens with this property since it's adjacent to P4. So just to make a comment on that.
And so, you know, some may ask, you know, how does bathrooms support tourism? But I think it's clear. As, as we try to build, you know, you know, attract more restaurants and other businesses down there, and we, we expect that people will come and mingle and have a good time, that there needs to be some sort of public facility. And so while this is not public, this is owned by Colonial Williamsburg, I think there is, you know, responsibility on us as, as the public to support that effort. So, and, and that's a big part of tourism for me down there. So.
Well, and to your point, even though it's owned by Colonial Williamsburg, it's not, anyone can use them. So I mean, it is public use.
The bathrooms are open to the public.
Yes, it is used open to the public.
Is there a motion?
Well, I'd like to have a discussion first.
Okay.
So certainly what we're talking about is true. And you could say the same thing about High Street. You could say the same thing about any shopping center where you've got a landlord who has responsibilities, and the city's being asked to really fund those. Also, I think there should be a higher threshold on approving these funds. And I mean, we really should be seeing a conceptual sketch as to what is the plan. Because we know that, we, we all support improving accessibility, but we also know when we improve accessibility in restrooms, we actually lose plumbing fixtures. So are we losing capacity now? And if we've got this money available, why don't we look at increasing capacity, like using it to maybe create a restroom in the parking structure to help Prince George Street in terms of public restrooms? So I think there needs to be a little more depth to the, to the facts here.
Could, have we, do we have a, a plan or a sketch from?
Not that, and Robbie can pull out the actual original application. I do not believe so. No. We have estimates from Colonial Williamsburg of the cost. Remember, this application was for all their restrooms downtown. And the committee is recommending just this Henry Street restroom be done. But no, there is not a, a plan. Just a price. Thank you.
So my impression with the grant committee was that they had to see some sort of plan throughout the stages of review for an application. So, I mean, maybe it's not that a conceptual plan is necessary, but what, what did the, what did the grant committee even consider?
I think they considered very much what Vice Mayor Pons just said, is that these restrooms are old. We saw pictures of the, the old restrooms, and it was a critical part of a visitor's experience coming downtown. And, and as I said, they weighed this bathroom structure versus the others in the historic area as being more publicly used, not just ticket holders. But no, they did not analyze stall by stall or fixtures, a conceptual plan of that sort.
It's the guidelines.
Well, and so I think Mr. Maslin makes a good point. I don't want to necessarily delay moving forward, but, you know, I think I would like to know that we're not going to lose fixtures. I don't know if the applicant has any, any idea of what that renovation's going to look like.
Mr. Vice Mayor, my suggestion would be that you simply make that a condition of the award. That way, the staff can monitor the project and make sure that they adhere to that. You know, I think that it, it, it's a great idea to have that level of design completed before you apply for a grant, but it also requires a pretty substantial financial commitment to get to that stage. And so I think that the committee was aware of that and really didn't want to hinder applications because of the financial burden of preparing documents to make the application.
And clearly, as they move forward, we'll see building permits and designs and that type of thing. So.
But I would agree with that, but we're talking about Colonial Williamsburg that has an in-house architectural engineering department.
Yeah, but they would still have to file permits.
No, in terms of coming up with a conceptual sketch, when you have in-house architects and engineers.
Sure. So is there something that you, you want to see specifically?
A conceptual layout.
And what, what do you hope to see in that? More fixtures, less fixtures?
What's the design?
So to make that a condition then of the award.
Right. Well, you can do that, but we also tasked the grant committee to have done that so that by the time city council considers it, we will have all that. I'm ready to make that condition. I don't think it's conceptual review. I mean, I, I'm sure there'll be a partnership with city staff. I think what we need to clarify moving forward is that we have all the materials in front of us. Because I do understand there's a financial obligation from the private sector that wants to partner with us, but we're also giving city taxpayer dollars. And I think this is compelling enough to give the fund, but we just need to be aware that it doesn't matter. We need to make sure the funds are accounted for. How would you, I'll make a motion if that's okay. Ms. City Attorney, how would you, uh, language the, that's not-
So is the condition that, is the condition that you want to add that there be no loss of fixtures?
Okay.
I think more, I think it's more of the seeing the plan.
That, that will be, I feel like that's just inherent throughout the review processes, isn't it, Mr. Trivett? I mean, do you think that needs to be conditioned?
I think it depends upon our overall goal. What I heard Mr. Maslin say is two things. Number one is he wants to make sure, I don't mean to speak for you.
No, go ahead.
I think he wants to make sure that there's not a reduction in capacity. We're not going to lose fixtures in the bathrooms themselves, which certainly we will know when they submit the plans. But it also sounds like there's some concern over seeing the design. And if that's the case, the council wouldn't have that opportunity, because it will go through the building permit process. So if the council is interested in seeing the design, then the condition needs to be that when a design is completed, it be reported back to council for final approval of the award.
Okay. So, so I, I don't need to see the, the design, but I would be interested not to lose capacity, you know, if at all possible. And I don't know how they can make up, you know, given requirements for space with ADA. I mean, to Mr. Maslin's point, you know, you need 65 inches in a, in a turnstall for an ADA, you know, toilet. So.
All right. Ms. Mayor, I move that city council approve a $350,000 grant to the Colonial Williamsburg Foundation in FY '20 for the renovation of the Henry Street restrooms to be paid as a reimbursement after work is completed, and also on the condition that there is no loss of plumbing fixtures. The restroom must remain open to the general public, and the renovations must be completed by December 31st, 2020.
Before you take the second on that, I just wanted to remind the council that on Tuesday, when we discussed this, Ms. Ramsey brought up the suggestion that this somehow be linked to the redevelopment of the parking lots, to ensure that if the, if this structure gets redesigned in some way, and it certainly seems like it will, that that not impact that- that construction project if we get to that stage. So is that something that the council wants to consider? I just don't want you to approve this motion and then realize that you forgot to link the two together, if that's something that the majority of council wanted to do.
So, Ms. Rams, can you, can you articulate that a little bit of what you're looking for there?
Well, my, my concern was that if there's renovation of the bathrooms done by December 31st, and then maintenance and expansion and restriping of P4 takes place afterwards, will that have some impact on the bathrooms that have just been reconfigured and perhaps have caused a change in design?
Well, and then, and thank you for that. You know, I would also like to know, that brings up another issue, if we end up tearing, if they decide they want to tear this down, and we have already constructed the parking lot, I would hate to have to use the new parking lot as the landing area for the new construction materials that would cause damage to the new parking lot. And so, I would like to see some coordination to that, to that effect as well. So maybe, Mr. Zhang, if you could amend that motion to offer that there be some coordination between the renovation and construct, and potential reconstruction of bathroom with the P4 renovations.
And, and I would suggest if you do that, that you extend the, the deadline of December 31st a bit. Typically, the, the milling and paving happen in May, and I think maybe give.
There's too much going on. Can we table this?
No, we got, we got it.
Okay.
So, with the, the, here's what I'll do. With the motion that Mr. Zhang has made, if I may add, that, that care be given to make sure that in the determination of renovation or reconstruction of the bathroom, that it coordinates effectively with the P4 renovations. And all this needs to be done by December 31st, 2021.
Plenty of time.
I think that's fine.
Okay.
Accept that amount?
Yeah, I accept it, thank you.
So we need a second?
I want to see a drawing. Is there a second?
Right, but that's, and, and first, and included in that was the request for drawing review of the bathrooms, right? Because that was.
Well, so I, I don't, I don't need to see the drawings.
I don't need to see the drawings.
But the fixtures.
Uh, no loss of fixtures is part of his motion.
I, I would require the drawings.
Second.
Ms. Felico, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Maslin.
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey.
Aye.
Mayor Freiling.
Abstain.
Vice Mayor Pons.
Aye.
Mr. Zhang.
Aye.
Okay, Paul, you can take over.
Thank you.
Item number three, the third, third project is the Kiwanis Park fourth softball field. And this is a project that will happen over two fiscal years. It's a $1.2 million project. And in order to balance the fund this year, once we removed Goodwin Square and added in the $750,000 for the parking lots, we had a $70,847 delta. So we worked with the Parks and Rec Department to reduce the funding for this project in year one, down to $529,153, but to plan a reserve of $670,847 for the next fiscal year, to bring them to the total of $1.2 million. And this will not delay the, this work being completed, will still be completed on the same timeline.
Questions?
No questions. My only comment is that this is, you know, finishing up the, the quad of the four softball fields, I think is an effective use of this money. It absolutely supports tourism. As we know, we do several softball tournaments a year that bring, you know, hundreds of visitors to the area, so I look forward to supporting this.
I support it.
I support it too, and, and to Vice Mayor Pons, I think that by having the fourth field, we have a softball complex, if I'm correct, which really puts us up a level as far as competing for those tournaments, so definitely supportive of this.
Are we getting closer to generational change, you think, with this one? What about, so, how many additional tournaments do you think we're going to be getting? Is, I mean, is this a big deal?
It is. So there are numbers in the application, and Ms. Hutton has those as well, where they outlined the actual number of tournaments that will be increased, then correlated more, the X amount of meals will be purchased in the city and room nights, so all of that was done. This was a, in terms of those factors, this application was very well, well done in terms of outlining that. X number of tournaments, more will bring this many more people who will, a percentage of those people will eat this many more meals, so that's all in the application.
And when these tournaments come, is it in conjunction with other fields in the area in addition to these four, too?
Yes. This is, Sports Marketing for Williamsburg does a great job of utilizing all the facilities across the three localities. So, so it is done in conjunction, but this brings this quad into a new level in terms of an asset to even attract more tournaments.
And, and on the backside, from what I've heard, that this will, that right now we are losing tournaments because we do not have this fourth field. So it's not just the additional tournaments, but it will help us keep the tournaments, or regain the tournaments that we had before.
That's correct.
Good news.
And do we need to do anything to take our concessions to a second level or something like that?
So our concession building is adequate to serve a fourth field?
Right, thank you.
And the other advantage of this project is you take an existing facility and increase the intensity of use on that site that's also proximate to city businesses, so you keep a lot of those participants in the tournament closer to other city operations that can benefit from spillover, and, and from people who are already coming here in addition to attracting the larger tournaments. I have a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that City Council approve a $529,153 grant to the City Parks and Recreation Department FY20, and a planned reserve of $670,847 for FY21, to total $1,200,000 to complete the fourth lighted field at Kiwanis Park.
Second.
Ms. Felico.
Mr. Maslin.
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey.
Aye.
Mayor Freiling.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pons.
Aye.
Mr. Zhang.
Aye.
Onto a comprehensive wayfinding system for downtown. This application started as an EDA application to design and install signage just for Prince George Street. Again, that intersection, we're trying to get people to cross Boundary Street and move from different nodes of activity downtown. As the committee spent a lot of time on this and discussing this, they felt like the opportunity needed to be used to have a comprehensive downtown wayfinding system that brings you from when you're coming in, in the car, and you need a place to park. It will address those issues, as well as once you park your car and get out, how do you find your way around and find things to do and, and places to spend your time and treasure? So they were very excited about this and felt it needed to be done sooner than later, and increased its scope to a comprehensive wayfinding system for downtown. And so the, the most, the recommendation is that City Council approve a $250,000 grant to facilitate the design and installation of this comprehensive wayfinding signage system. And to be clear, while it was an EDA request, city staff will be the ones who manage this project through the public procurement and community input process.
So, who will, who will design the signs, who will approve the signs, who will approve what's on the signs? Is that going to be part of the EDA's role, or is that purely staff?
No, I, I see this as, as ultimately a city council decision, but the EDA as a recommending body. So staff work, and the, and we did this in 2007 with the commemoration for the whole region. A, an RFP will go out to bring in an expert on wayfinding, to design the system and work with the stakeholders on, on both the customers and the businesses and the residents and the students for that input. I see the Economic Development Authority then recommending to council for your ultimate approval before they're installed.
Thank you. Thank you, Michelle, for this presentation. I think it's important to point out, despite seeing what its steep cost it may be, that this has been a topic of conversation about downtown vibrancy and through our goals, initiatives, and outcomes for many years, even through predecessors of city councils. So happy to support it, and glad to see something finally come about with it.
And I would concur with Mr. Zhang that this has been a recommendation in the downtown vibrancy study, it's been something that businesses have asked for, and it's been an RGIO, so I support it as well.
Could you comment on the deliverables in terms of, what in addition to signage are we talking about? For example, is, are we going to partner with IT, and is this, you know, GPS, and working with Google in terms of how we route people? What's, what's the possibility?
Sure, great question. That will certainly be part of the calculus as we move forward. There are, as technology moves forward, there are better and better digital signage that's available, and, and that would be something that we'd need to have a community conversation in Williamsburg about, because that's something we've traditionally not, not sought out in downtown. So I see that as part of the discussion, but I think it's up to the community, then ultimately council deciding whether that's the correct answer or not to be installed. But certainly, it's technologically doable.
And how far geographically are we looking? Are we, are we actually starting on 64, and how do we get there? Or are we starting on Boundary Street?
So we would, at the end of the day, of course, we cover the, the city boundaries. This project, though, is kind of working from the inside out, so from downtown out. And I've, I've taken a snapshot of the picture of, of the general area, so train station to the museum on Henry Street, and then to the delis. But the, the design and the work will be done within a context of being able to expand out to cover the entire city. This effort will start in the, the downtown, but with thoughts to how each corridor will lead there.
What typically is provided by a consultant, and it's actually one of the things that the committee said when they considered this project, was they wanted it to expand beyond the original application of Prince George Street, because the idea of consistency is important. And so when you think about the city of Williamsburg, one of the things that we have been focused on for a long time is brand. And so if you allow a sign of this type and a sign of that type, and you end up with a hodgepodge of, of message, then you lose that brand. By engaging the consultant and expanding the award to $250,000, what we will get from the consultant, and we're fortunate in the state of Virginia to have three or four that are considered national experts in wayfinding, to come in and give us essentially a sheet, a design sheet, that will start all the way from large signs for high-speed roads such as I-64, all the way down to the slow-speed roads of downtown.
So the e-mobility will be able to be considered as part of this in terms of what their signs requirements are?
Exactly.
And actually on their app, right?
Exactly, yeah. I think, I think our IT director is, is really looking forward to this, because like I said, the technology's out there to, to make it happen. The aesthetics will need to be, to be, of course, debated by the community.
Mr. Mayor, I hope you have some comments.
I have something to say. To the point about how long this has been under discussion, it was a, a very hot topic of conversation when I was council's liaison to the Economic Development Authority, which was prior to Mr. Foster's role in that regard, which was prior to Ms. Ramsey's role in that regard. So it goes back at least eight years that we, that the EDA has been talking about the need for improved wayfinding. One of the challenges was, there was never any money to fund it. Some of the things, I, I'm not making this a contingency of anything, but some of the things I'd like for folks to be thinking about as this project moves forward, is Mr. Maslin's point about technology, but also the importance of helping people most efficiently find available parking spaces. So if we can't do it today, can we think of a system that could have the ability to be adapted down the road if, if we have that technology in the lots and can make that information available to people? The other thing is also, at some point, having a conversation with the university, not that we're going to be providing wayfinding to all of their buildings, or, but they have some key pieces in this area, and so getting their input on what that looks like, I think, would be a helpful thing to do.
Certainly, we don't want to ignore our strategic partners as we plan for direction from the interstate, because obviously, it's, it's about getting people where they need to go, no matter where that might be, including restaurants.
Yeah.
I move that City Council approve a $250,000 grant to the Williamsburg Economic Development Authority to facilitate the design and installation of a comprehensive wayfinding signage system.
Second.
Ms. Felico.
Mr. Maslin.
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey.
Aye.
Mayor Freiling.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pons.
Aye.
Mr. Zhang.
Aye.
Great. Onto the City Square Park, right outside the door here, in the, the library plaza where the fountain is. You can see from this sketch the area that we're, we're talking about. This started as an application for placemaking from the library. Came to us, they've done a great job of activating this space, and they were asking for a few more assets to continue that activa, activation. After discussion and review, the proposed recommendation is that City Council approve a $10,000 grant to the library to purchase additional furniture for this space and the activation, that's one recommendation. And the other part of this is that City Council approve a $100,000 grant for our City Parks and Rec Department to purchase a portable stage that could be used for events, not only in the space, but throughout the city.
So you want us to do these together?
I think that on the agenda item summary, we have them split out as two separate motions.
Good. Comments?
I support it.
I support it.
I support it as well.
Do you have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the City Council approve a $10,000 grant to the Williamsburg Regional Library to purchase additional furniture for the City Square Plaza. Also, Mr. Mayor, I move that the City Council approve a $100,000 grant to the City Parks and Rec Recreation Department to purchase a portable stage available for use in the city.
Second. Ms. Felico.
Mr. Maslin.
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey.
Aye.
Mayor Freiling.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pons.
Aye.
Mr. Zhang.
Aye.
And this is our last.
This is your last. So this is the expansion of the indoor recreation center into an indoor sports facility. And we've discussed this, this is one that the, the committee said truly, this in the Kiwanis Park field, you can definitely identify that visitors are going to come and spend over, and, and stay in a hotel, eat, eat in our restaurants, and have that impact. So this is a large facility with a, a, a big price tag. So the way we, we wanted to break it up and how we could get towards construction and funding and support from our, from our neighboring localities to move forward on this. And we did that by outlining what would happen for the first five years for this project. So the recommendation that is in year one, City Council approve a $250,000 grant that will allow further study to be done about what uses need to happen in the facility, and how it's designed, and, and that work be done in year one. And then plan reserves in year two of another $250,000 for a more detailed building design, $800,000 in year three to pay a portion of the debt service that will be required as construction starts on this project, and then commit $1.15 million in years four and five and out for the Tourism Development Fund share of debt service after construction, realizing this is not enough to pay the debt service on the whole building, but it would probably pay about half, and that would encourage regional participation through maintenance of effort or other funds that will be identified to move forward.
Yeah, so this, this is the game changer, I think, that, that we have been talking about generational changes, and, and really, I think the, the project that spear the whole Tourism Development Fund thinking is this type of big project. This project is, a project like this has been discussed and studied in the community for over five years. James City County, City of Williamsburg, York County, Chamber of Commerce, Hotel Association have spent hundreds of thousands of dollars, and the bulk of that, but the Hotel Association recently, who submitted this application, I think this application alone was upwards of $70,000 to, to get all the feasibility study updates, the drawings, and, and where we are today. So thank you very much for that. This is a big step, but there's big steps that have to come along with it, and we, we need to make this initial investment for sure, to, to go out and talk to those partners as Mr. Witt just mentioned, because making this a regional effort is, is paramount to obtain, to make this a success. And I think when we talk about tourism product and diversifying our tourism product in a way that complements what we have here today in history and other educational aspects and theme parks, this is exactly it, so I look forward to supporting it. Thank you.
I concur with the Vice Mayor. I think this is exactly the game changer kind of project that we've talked about and discussed as a council, even though I came at the other side of opposing the policy at the time at the enactment, I think all of us had appreciated and understood that this policy is for the purpose of funding that, not necessarily one particular project, but in the totality of it. that, not necessarily one particular project, but in the totality of it, which is what we've been doing today, funding all these different projects collectively will provide that that necessary step in the right direction of increasing our tourism, increasing our patronage to our restaurants. There's not a strong causality, but it does help because this is an investment that we as the City Council are making. I hope for our two other localities, they'll take note that we are committed to this project, particularly with the sports facility. I think for younger families, to incentivize them to want to come, I think we need to walk the walk, and this is exactly the kind of project that will draw younger families, maybe to visit, maybe to even stay in the area. And that's exactly what the reason why I support this. It's a hefty price bag, price tag, but I think, given the whole situation of how our visitation has declined over the years, the the struggles that we've seen every year when we talk about our budget, our comprehensive audit and financial report, we have to do something, and this is exactly that kind of action we need to take today.
The only thing I will say is that I've been a big supporter of sports tourism, and this fits right in there. It is a transformative project, and I think it would be good for for the city and the region and support it.
I I agree with that, but in terms of process, it seems to me, are we at the point where we know the architectural program and how quickly can we get to site selection and then check back with the two counties and the College of William and Mary in terms of buy-in, both for the capital investment and the operations costs, which I'm not sure are addressed here?
Sure. So so staff outlined the timeframe we thought we could get there. This this, you'd be under construction in year three, but clearly year one is all about that regional consensus, figuring out the programming and the financial model to move forward. So that that would include what uses are going to happen in the building, how big the building is going to be, what's it going to look like, where the building will be located. All of those are part of this year one. And just as important, if not more so, is that regional consensus in year one. We can't do this alone. So and it makes sense to do it regionally. So that'll be a big push for year one, but we're optimistic that we could get to get to year three where we're under construction.
But really, the flow chart chart is going to show us a decision point.
I'm sorry?
We'll have decision points that I think we need to focus on rather than ultimate construction because it may take us a while to redo.
Yes.
Recommendations and and get everybody's buy-in, right?
That's exactly right. And when I have talked with the county executives, county administrators from the other counties, I have outlined the fact that as we go through this process, despite the council sending a clear message today, if you approve this, that we are interested in moving along, not only with the project but being its host. And that shows a level of commitment that I think is now deserved. It doesn't mean that we're going to proceed without caution. And so when we get to the end of a process of year one, we should have many more answers in terms of, as as Mr. Witt said, what's going to be in the building, how big it is, where it's going to be located, which ultimately will impact the decision of those two counties to participate or not. And obviously, that will completely change the structure of the cost of the project and our commitment in years two, three, four, five, and into the future as we pay debt service on this.
So in terms of what we're approving dollar-wise, are we approving the whole all these years and then we have decision points where we'll come back and reevaluate?
What you're doing is you are approving firmly year one, and you are telling the staff to reserve the sums identified for future years so that we don't get to the point where we want to proceed with the project and don't have access to the funding.
So in some ways, it's not unlike the C I P.
Right.
Where we're committing to the first year, we're planning on the outlier years, but if circumstances change, we'll adjust accordingly.
Exactly. And, you know, there there are a lot of unknowns here. Principle among them is how we finance this when we get to that point. And that's going to completely change that number that's shown in years four and five. What we did to come up with this estimate was simply look at today's market, what the city might bond for, and added in just a little bit of extra money there to come up with the one point one in debt service, which, as Mr. Witt said, is about half of what might be required to fund a project of this size. We would still be looking to the Tourism Council for assistance from their regional fund as well.
So are you, so it's clear to say we cannot move forward on this without the participation of our regional partners?
Well, I don't know that you can say that because there's clearly enough funding in the T D F to bond a project of this magnitude, but it would consume that money entirely for the foreseeable future, the lifetime of the bond. So you can't say that we couldn't proceed on our own, but I think that it's wisest, the best use of our resources, and certainly consistent with the vision of both this set of money as well as the regional set of money for a project like this to proceed using both sources.
And that money does need to take into account operation.
Right. The the operational piece of this is is another component, and what we've acknowledged is that if the city takes on the bulk share of funding the construction, our regional partners would be relied upon to help us with the annual operation and maintenance.
Well, I'm very much in favor of this as long as we can get that cooperation from our regional partners. If we can't, even if it's possible for us to do it, I'm not sure it's the wisest path unless something else changes along the way. Do you have a motion?
I move that the City Council approve a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant in F Y twenty for further study and design and planned reserves of two hundred and fifty thousand in F Y twenty-one for building design, eight hundred thousand in F Y twenty-two to pay the T D F share of debt service during construction, and one point one hundred and fifty thousand in F Y twenty-three and twenty-four to pay the T D F share of debt service after construction.
Second.
Ms. Felico.
Mr. Maslin.
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey.
Aye.
Mayor Freiling.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pons.
Aye.
Mr. Zhang.
Aye.
And Mr. Maslin, I thought generational change happened when Mr. Zhang was elected to council.
Oh, so we've achieved that.
So we're going to move on to new business. I'd ask my colleagues' consideration for a reordering of the business here. We have some representatives with us from the school district, so if we could move that item up to the top of the list with.
I'm comfortable there.
Yes. So who's going to kick this off?
I think Finance Director Dameron can can start us off on the discussion, and I know that we have some representatives from the school division. Thank you, Madam Superintendent, for being here. If the council should have questions about the specific project.
So this is consideration of Resolution nineteen dash eighteen authorizing the fiscal year twenty nineteen school year-end spending plan totaling one hundred and seventy-eight thousand eight hundred and forty-three dollars and amending the fiscal year twenty twenty sales tax fund budget.
Yes, and our current city-county-school contract provides that any unexpendant local funds come back to the city or county based on our funding percentages. The schools had unex- unexpendant local funds, and the amount that we come back to the city totaled two hundred and forty-two thousand two hundred and twenty-eight dollars. They are, did, it also, our contract allows for them to come back with a spending plan and ask to retain those funds. The schools have done that. The portion of the spending plan that they would like to retain from the city would be one hundred and seventy-eight thousand eight hundred and forty-three dollars. Included in your packet is a communication from the schools that explains both the surplus and the projects that they would like to fund with, well, with this money. And is, Mr. Trivett pointed out, Dr. Heron and some of her staff are here to answer any questions related to the surplus or the projects.
Okay.
Well, perhaps they could come forward and just kind of talk about those projects, I think would be helpful.
And if you'd be kind enough to come to the podium over here, that would be helpful, please.
Now that you walked all over.
Sorry about that. Welcome, Dr. Heron.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Freiling, members of City Council, Mr. Trivett, when he comes back again. Thank you for the opportunity to to be here to answer questions about our end-of-year spending plan. I think we've provided all of the details of the various pieces, but we're here to address any questions that you may have about the various items. And I have with me this afternoon Ms. Ewing, our Chief Financial Officer, and Mr. Snipes, our Senior Director of Operations.
Okay. I know Mr. Maslin has some questions, and maybe those will spur some others, so if you want us to kick it off.
Okay, yeah, just two questions. So we had a a good presentation in terms of transportation and the need for cameras to enforce the motor vehicle regulations on stopping for school buses. Is that in the regular budget for next year? Is that why we're not seeing it here?
I'm going to ask ask Mr. Snipes to address that question because he's been most closely involved with transportation and the.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Mayor Freiling and and council members. Your question is, is it part of the next year's budget?
Yeah, so so we approved the enabling legislation, which hopefully will cut down. And we were surprised to hear a thousand violations last year, and this year it seems to be tracking it twice as much. When are those cameras going to be funded for putting on the school buses?
Well, currently, we are in discussions with purchasing to do an R F P for the for the school stop arm cameras. We want to anticipate that the money will be available until fiscal year twenty, twenty-one, excuse me.
So after July first?
Yes.
After July first, okay. But why not use some of this money for that if the if we think that's a good, that's a significant safety measure?
Why not use?
Why not use the surplus that we're talking about for that program?
The R F P hasn't even been issued yet. The company hasn't been selected. We're not in a position to to do that yet, and there is quite a lengthy process to to get to that point.
And you have to use these funds by the end of?
That's correct. In fact, these are last year's funds that need to, that are ready for use immediately if they are provided by the council.
Okay. The second question was about the student driver training. Really surprised that, you know, we're keeping vehicles that long with that many miles for that use.
Yes, we do have a cycle, and I'm going to let Mr. Snipes again speak to that.
Yeah, we do have a fifteen-year replacement cycle on our vehicles, and that includes buses. And so the the vehicles are maintained at a very good rate. So I know you you said you're surprised by that, but that's not unusual for us to maintain all of our vehicles for fifteen years and to continue the maintenance on them.
Have we had any incidents with student drivers because of the the condition of the vehicles?
Not that I'm aware of, but our CFO is here, she can.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
Thank you. And I think it's also worth noting that based upon my experience, many students don't go through the school system for drivers and behind-the-wheel training just because of timing issues. Discussion, motion?
I have nothing to offer. I support it.
I'm comfortable. So ready to motion?
All right.
I I move that City Council adopt Resolution nineteen dash eighteen.
Second.
Ms. Felico.
Mr. Maslin.
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey.
Aye.
Mayor Freiling.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pons.
Aye.
Mr. Zhang.
Aye.
Okay, we'll start back at the top. New business, consideration of an ordinance to declare certain structures, thirty-thirty Richmond Road in the city of Williamsburg has blighted and authorize abatement of the blight.
Mr. Mayor, I, given a future employment contract with legal counsel Kaufman and Cannell's, I will be recusing myself from discussion and from voting.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Zhang.
Thank you.
Right, so I'm going to handle this one.
Okay.
If Mr. Westheimer would come up to the podium because he's going to help with the the slides. Back in July, the building department declared the structures at thirty-thirty Richmond Road, which is the old Motel Six, which is now the Regency Hotel, were unsafe structures and evacuated the individuals who were occupying the structures at that time. That was a year into a process where they had some structural issues that they needed to address, and we received notice on the fifth of July that the contractor was no longer going to be working on the project and so was pulling the permit, and as a result, that happened. So there is a spite-spot-blight process in the Code of Virginia in thirty-six forty-nine point one colon one that outlines what we do when we have unsafe structures that need to be addressed by the city, and it provides a process for that that starts with notice to the property owner that the properties are in need of repair. And that letter went out to the property owner on July the eighteenth of twenty nineteen that gave the property owner a thirty-day period to provide a written spot-by-blight abatement plan that was acceptable to the city manager. No such plan was received within that thirty days. We did receive a request from the property owner to extend that about a month later, and so that deadline was extended to October the eighteenth, and no plan was received by October the eighteenth, although subsequently we did meet with the property owner and his legal counsel and his consultant regarding the plan for the property. So Mr. Westheimer is here to show you the condition of the property, and then I'll pick up on the process.
So before he does that, may I ask a quick?
Mm-hmm.
So all we've asked the property owner to do is to provide a plan.
Yes.
Not to complete the abatement.
That's correct.
Just please tell us what you're going to do to address it.
We are still at plan stage.
And we do not have that yet.
Not yet.
Okay.
And and they have said, give us an extension to provide that.
Yes.
Which we did, and now that's expired.
Yes.
Okay.
We did make it clear, though, we did make it clear, though, that our expectation was deeper than just the plan. Given the condition of the building and how long it has sat there without attention, we asked them to not only provide the plan but have a contractor of record and permits in hand to proceed.
Okay. Mr. Westheimer.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, these are just pictures to to show the dilapidation of the property and the state that it's in currently at today's date. As you can see, there is severe rot and deterioration in the exterior balconies. These are all used for egress paths. This is a hotel that egresses from the from the outside, so all of the exits are basically unsafe and unfit because of the because of the deterioration of the structure. A significant amount of rot was found. Some of the balconies have fallen five to six inches based on the the structural integrity of the columns holding them up. So this picture is kind of the the backbone of the unsafe, unfit structure that we posted back in July.
So despite this perspective, these are not the eaves of a roof. This is the bottom of the balcony of the story above.
Yes, sir. You can see underneath the sign that says welcome. This is one of the pictures from underneath, so that is the actual balcony, the walk-in balcony of the first and second floor, or second, third floor, excuse me.
And it's actually a wooden platform with a concrete slab poured on top of it.
Yes.
Which, you know, obviously increases the concern as these support beams are weakened.
Yeah, also the railing for the guardrails.
Yeah, he's got more stuff.
There were several instances where the the railings were missing or broken from their columns and were just supported by straps. And there's a few pictures as it go along the, actually, we'll show that. Several missing guardrail sections, broken away from their supports. Supposed to be able to withstand a two-hundred-pound live load, these weren't even close. Again, another repetitive picture of the of the guardrails and and their supports. The one on the left is the handrail that's come unattached from the exterior structure. These were just to show some of the other conditions that were found of the property in spite of the egress and structural problems that we found. We we found an excessive amount of mold and mildew in several of the rooms. The picture in the center is of the boiler room, and that was one of the boilers that was functioning at the time. The other pictures are are just some of the conditions. Light bulbs hanging out, just the H V A C units, the the grills missing or damaged. The one on the middle right is one that has taped up. I guess the the person that that thought that they were getting a lot of cold air coming in the grill that was unnecessary, so that was their solution. This last picture is just to show some more of the the violations that we found, and these were both building and fire code violations totaling forty in all. So be happy to answer any other questions you might have as it relates to the building itself.
Ms. Shelton, you have a building question, Mr. Maslin?
Yeah, so can you give us the the timing on this? So how does how do the, when these pictures were taken, relate to when it became vacant?
So these pictures were taken the week after we posted unsafe, unfit. We went back July the twelfth and did a complete inspection of the property with the fire department. That's when these pictures were taken.
With the cooperation of the property owner?
Yes, absolutely.
I think the important distinction there is these are not pictures after months of having been vacant. These are pictures a week after it was occupied.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Ms. Shelton, you want to?
All right, so so a list of those specific violations was sent as part of the correspondence with the property owner back in July. We received notice around the eighteenth of October that the owner had obtained legal counsel, who is Mr. Desmond DeVore, who is here. who is Mr. Dustin DeVore, who is here on behalf of the property owner. He met with the city manager, representative from TAM, who is the engineering consultant that the owners hired on the project. And we went through very carefully and specifically what we expected a remediation plan to contain. To that point, we had received some, some sketches, some drawings about the structural issues that didn't address. It addressed three items on the list that Mr. Westheimer had given them, and so that was not adequate at that point. The process at this point is for the city council to determine whether or not the property is blighted and to adopt an ordinance if council finds that the property is blighted, which authorizes the city manager to abate the blight. And that can be repairing the property, that can be demolishing the structures on the property. So that is the stage at which we are, and the ordinance is front of you, in front of you, which gives the city manager the authority to do that. That does not mean that tomorrow the city is going to go out and tear down the structures. The city manager still has the ability to work with the property owner after city council adopts the ordinance, but this simply lays the groundwork for the city to be able to address the concerns if the property owner fails to do that.
So, it's not a public hearing, but I'd be happy to hear from the attorney, Mr. DeVore. But before that, do we have any more questions, Mr. Shelton?
Well, so let me just, help me understand the process. So, and walk it through as simply as I can. So we've got a, we've got a property that's in poor condition.
Yes.
We notified the owners that it's uninhabitable, and they had to submit a plan to remedy the, the violations.
Yes.
Back and forth, they hadn't done it. So, so the city's left with this building.
Yes.
That's blighted, and heretofore, we haven't had any cooperations from the owners that show that they're willing to remedy the property to get it back to a habitable or an, an open business condition.
I would say that was overstating.
Okay.
The property owner did not promptly engage in that process.
Okay.
And from October the 18th, I understand that they have been working on that process, but we have not received a plan, at least as of 1 o'clock today. So there is an indication that the property owner, and I'll let Mr. DeVore speak for his own client, is willing to engage in the work but has not done that, and this is the next step in the process to give the city the authority to take those actions should the property owner fail to do that.
So we're, we're going to create an ordinance that, that if they don't come forward and remedy the, the problems at the property, we can move forward with one of the, the solutions that you just mentioned.
Yes.
Whether we renovate it or we tear it down.
That's correct.
So we're creating a sense of urgency?
That's right. I think so.
And you're, you're shaving a month off of a corrective action at a later date, right? By having to wait on the council to take this action.
And you're thinking...
I will say that we did meet with the owner and his representatives, and they were very cooperative in our meeting. We outlined things that needed to be done prior to this meeting, and they have done many of those, but not all of them. I think simply because it's taken more time to do a complete set of drawings to satisfy the building official than maybe they anticipated. So I'm not, I, I won't say that I expect that we will find ourselves in a, in a position of demolition. I'm optimistic that the owner will come forward with a plan that we can accept and move forward with. I am less optimistic that the owner will be able to carry forward those plans to renovate, simply due to cost, once they realize what's involved.
And think about the people who live nearby. It's been...
Sure.
Poor people who were living there at the time, the conditions they were living under, they all had to be relocated, and then the folks living by, nearby, it's been over four months.
Sure.
But we also realize sometimes these things are complicated, so...
And, and we, we recognize that it's, you know, there's a weak visitation market here, and so this property is turned into effectively a housing building, which is, is not a safe environment in itself, so...
And it didn't get this way in a few months either.
That's right.
No.
There's, there's clear signs of long-term neglect.
Mr. DeVore, do you want to...
Sir.
Anything you want to add? And thank you for being here, by the way.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name's Dustin DeVore with the law firm of Kaufman and Canals. Thanks for having me. Before we got in this matter, I just wanted to applaud the council on the use of the 942 funds. I've been working with hospitality businesses, restaurants, hotels in Williamsburg for almost 20 years, and I, I, I think the last few years the city council been, has been as proactive for trying to promote tourism as I've ever seen in the, the 23 years I've been in Williamsburg. So thank you for that on behalf of someone in the tourism industry. Now, to the matter at hand, as Mr. Pons, the vice mayor stated, it is a weak market. The properties suffered. Sunstar is a company based out of North Carolina. They are not a large company. They own several hotels. And I'm, I'm here on their behalf. First of all, I want to thank Mr. Westheimer, and I'd like to thank the city manager and the city attorney for working with us. As they said, when our firm got involved, I think things have become more proactive. One thing I would mention that has happened since our meeting 10 days or two weeks ago is there is now a fence up around the property, which they requested, and all the debris, or most of the debris from the property has, has been removed, and we've sent pictures of that to the city. There were some dilapidated cars there, some trash, and some other items, and we've, as I said, we've sent pictures of that to the city manager. So why has this taken so long? As Ms. Shelton said, the initial letter went out in July 18th or 28th. Several reasons. As I said, they're out of state. There's also a little bit of a language barrier, frankly, that has caused some issues. An initial construction company was hired. They have an out-of-state contractor that they use for all their jobs. They hired a local company. That company bailed out on them. And I've got Eric White from TAM here with me, our consultant, who can, can speak to that more if you'd like to hear, hear that. Also, obviously, the, it's taken some time because, as I believe Mr. Pons said, it, it's complicated. As you saw, there, there are significant conditions with the property, and they are dedicated to fixing them. But there's been a series of road bumps. I assure you now that the owner understands the significance of this. They came up from North Carolina for the meeting a few weeks ago. I have been pressing them to make sure that this is done, and they understand the importance of it. Additionally, the plan that the city manager mentioned, that plan, which Eric has been working on, will be ready tomorrow, and we will have to the city council by Monday, or no later than Monday. He is happy to answer any questions having to do with that plan. We, I think the, the city attorney and city manager would agree that there's been open communication since we got involved, and we've been willing to do what the city asks. Obviously, we oppose the ordinance as the, as the owner of the property, but the city manager, again, has expressed to us what, what he just said to you, which was that even if the ordinance passes, he's willing to work with us. And again, on behalf of Sunstar, they are committed to rehab this property. They, it has taken longer, believe me, than they would like as well, and they are committed to move forward. So with that, I'll yield the floor. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. DeVore. And I, I'll just say, on Mr. Trivitt's behalf, why not speak for you when you're here? Is, and you, you don't have to sit and stand, is that the city does not want to tear this building down. We have a lot of other things that we need to pay attention to and devote resources to, because even if we get reimbursed for this at some point, it's work for a very small staff to take on in the midst of a lot of, as you can tell by the length of this meeting, a lot of other projects. But we need for your client to understand that we are serious about this, and although we don't want to tear it down, Mr. Trivitt will be authorized to make that happen. So anything you can do to encourage that client, your client, to communicate as well as possible with city staff and to move this forward, we would greatly appreciate it.
To that point, Mr. Mayor, what we will do is we will promptly begin the process of selecting a, a contractor to assist in the demolition so that everything is lined up to take the action should we need to.
So, been in the motel business a long time, and so I understand the conditions of the market and how facilities can become derelict like that, and it takes, you know, a diligent owner, and I, I think I was for many years, you know, to, to maintain a property in this, in this marketplace. And so I'm sympathetic to the owners at Sunstar out of North Carolina. I'm also, but with that, I'm, I'm a little leery that once that number comes in, you know, and if it's a, you know, $2 million number, you know, are they going to be able to justify that through revenue? And I don't know that the market's there that's going to sustain it moving forward, and, and maybe they're going to back out at that, once they get that full, you know, total construction renovation cost. So, and if they get to that, that point in their decision-making, who knows what they're going to do? And so by create, allowing us to create this, or creating this ordinance, allowing the city manager to make this determination and move forward, helps us along in the process if, if unfortunate, maybe inevitable occurrence happens. So, want to encourage you guys to continue to work to renovate the property. I think we, it's clear that Mr. Trivitt is willing to, you know, work with you all through that process. As, as the mayor pointed out, we don't want to tear it down. I mean, that's somebody's business, and that's somebody's livelihood, and they, that building's been there for long term, it served our community well, and we hope that it continues to do that. It hasn't served us well in the last 10 years, quite frankly, because of the, the nature of the clientele and the business and, you know, the associated crimes come along with that. We need to see that cleaned up, because that's not what we want in our city.
Comments?
Question, so is there a local property manager?
As of right now, no, sir. When the property was opened, there was an onsite manager, but not a, not a property man, not a hotel management company that I'm aware of that, that operated it locally.
So if there's a breach of the fence, who's Chief Dunn going to get in contact with?
There is, there's security on staff. Mr. Trivitt probably recalls better than I do. I believe it's 16 hours a day, or 18 hours a day that there's security onsite along with the fence, and there has been prior to the fence as well.
And they would respond to requests from police?
Yes, sir. They would call police or, or emergency services as needed.
And then they could affect any repairs?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Further discussion, motion?
I move that City Council find that the property located at 3030 Richmond Road is blighted, and that City Council adopt proposed ordinance 19-24.
Second.
Ms. Felico.
Mr. Maslin.
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey.
Aye.
Mayor Freiling.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pons.
Aye.
Mr. Zhang.
Abstain.
This takes us to consideration, consideration and authorization for the award of a contract for the regional EPA Brownfield grant implementation to Draper Aiden Associates.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. I'm delighted today to bring before you the contract to implement the $600,000 EPA Brownfield grant that we've received in, in conjunction with James City County and York County in the Greater Williamsburg partnership. These funds are provided by the federal government by EPA. They do not require a local match, and they allow us to assess and have a community conversation about Brownfield properties that need to be, or have the potential to be redeveloped in all three localities. We've gone through the city's procurement process, which matches the Commonwealth of Virginia's procurement process, and determined that Draper Aiden and Associates is the engineering firm to hire for this, and we need your authorization to make that so. Deborah Flippo from Draper Aiden and Associates is here with us today, if you have any questions directly for her. But there was, that is our recommendation that you authorize this, this contract.
I think it's a good opportunity.
I agree. Did First Cities have any, Virginia First Cities have any hand in assisting us with the quantities, with this Brownfields grant?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. I know they have in the past.
I have no questions. Good opportunity.
I know I can count on you for a question, Mr. Maslin.
So what if we actually found a Brownfield sitting over there on the College of William and Mary? Would they have access to these funds?
Hmm, that's a great question.
These funds are only to help us identify.
It helps us identify and do the phase one and phase two.
So could we use that at the College of William and Mary if they wanted to partner with us?
So I believe so, yes. We, we, the EPA grant administrator was down yesterday, and we looked at the Aldiler complex as a potential property.
That's what I was thinking, yeah.
Yes.
Okay. That's great, thanks.
Just keep in mind, and I know you're saying the right words, but I want to explain it so everybody knows. This does not include money for actual remediation. It's purely study money.
One good thing, though, about this grant and our confidence in Draper Aiden, they've had a lot of success with, with other clients in turning this grant into more grants to actually pay for the remediation. And you recall that we've been successful five times now getting remediation money from the state to do, to do some projects here. So delighted to have some federal funds now that hopefully opens the door for more federal funds in the future.
And noted on the, it doesn't help with remediation, but if it does help with the phase one and the phase two, that helps us understand what the remediation would entail.
Absolutely.
Which is still valuable.
Yes.
Do I hear motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that City Council authorize the city manager to sign agreements with Draper Aiden Associates to manage and implement the $600,000 Greater Williamsburg Community-Wide Brownfields Coalition Assessment Grant.
Second. Ms. Felico.
Mr. Maslin.
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey.
Aye.
Mayor Freiling.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pons.
Aye.
Mr. Zhang.
Aye.
This takes us to item C under New Business: Consideration and Approval of an Award of $10,000 from the Tourism Promotion Contingency Fund to the Precarious Beer Project. Is that...
Sorry.
I didn't know who's precarious calling you on this. To the Precarious Beer Project for its Field Days event.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of City Council. This is one of two applications that you have before you today for the Tourism Promotion Contingency Fund. These funds are used to help get events started or enhance events, and the idea is that these funds are used one time, and then the, the program can be designed to continue without these funds, but to help get a project start, get a, an event started to, to, to provide more vibrancy in the city. So there is $120,000 remaining in this fund this fiscal year, and the first application today is from Precarious Beer Project for its Field Days events. This is an event they held last year. They do it on Thanksgiving, the Saturday of Thanksgiving weekend at the DeWitt Wallace Lawn. And 1,800 people attended last year. Thirty percent of those attendees were from out of a day's drive, or out of the marketing region, out of, out of the region. So they were expected to have, have spent the night here when they came. This year, they're anticipating 2,000 attendees. So you may ask, why are they asking for funding if they've already done this? This ran in the red last year, and they lost money at this, at these funding. So they've retooled their projections and are asking the city for $10,000 to help move forward, and that will continue them into the future to not require additional funds. They're also expanding it. They're bringing in 40, 40 brewers this year, five restaurants are participating. I don't know if anyone was able to go last year. I was able to actually have a human foosball. It's, it's a, it's a demographic, activities happening that's a demographic we like to see, 21 to 50-year-olds, is what they're saying, although we are all welcome. So... Mr. Andrew Voss was, it's his, his son's seventh birthday today, so he was unable to stay to, to speak to you now. But I'm here to answer any questions if I can. Staff is recommending that this $10,000 grant be made, consistent with the, the tourism promotion contingency policy, and the understanding that these funds are a one-time for this project.
So, no, no real question, just a comment. You know, the, the, these types of events are, are, you know, what we like to see down in, in the city, particularly in, we have another applicant coming up next, who's got a long, successful history of putting on these types of things. Reality of it is, they don't always make money for themselves. And so then the value, and so what is the value of that? The value is the people coming into Williamsburg and the residual spending, and, and then just the, the cultural lifestyle, you know, the, the place-making stuff that happens that makes us a vibrant community, and that's why I think it's important to, to support these types of things. No comment, just, there are no questions, just a comment.
Thanks for your presentation, Michelle. Thanks for your presentation, Michelle, my question is, you said that there's a stipulation that this is a one-time grant for this year, which makes sense, but with the understanding that they will not apply for any of these grants again?
Oh, no, sir, just that the Tourism Contingency Fund is not meant to fund these year-over-year, so they understand that, they understand this is a one-time infusion, and they've done their pro formas to, and, and have planned that they can move forward without.
Their package is very thorough, I support it, I think one comment in terms of the policies, hopefully as the city will move along with its GIOs with regards to Capital Landing Road and the Culinary Arts District, I'm sure some businesses may want to tap into those funds, that's future fiscal years, but I would like to see a little bit more of, you know, how you're going to address other regions of the city that might want to utilize these funds, and obviously we want to activate this, but for today's purpose, I think this contributes to downtown vibrancy, no other business has asked for, you know, 10,000 in particular, it's not really necessarily competing, so I support it, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wid, and would there be a performance agreement with this as, as well as other awards we've given?
Yes, Van, for all the awards under this program, we use the same model we use for our EDA incentive program, so we use a performance agreement that looks very much like that and has clawbacks of things, and expectations from both parties of what will happen with the grant of these monies.
And, and it's been, I think, presented to other organizations that have come in and asked for money from the Tourism Contingency Fund, that there are, if they want continuation of funding support, that there are other avenues open to them.
Yes. Yes.
And, and to Mr. Zhang's question, I guess, there's nothing precluding someone from Capital Landing Road or another part of the city from coming in and asking for, for funding for a project at, at their locale.
Yes, we welcome it.
Open to any, any part of the city anywhere.
Welcome, our phone number is 757-220-6104.
Adopt a tree now.
Yes, thank you.
Just for clarity, so where's the threshold in terms of not coming back for requesting funds, what if they just changed the name of the event, it's a different event, can they come back next year, or is this specifically, we're saying, don't come back and call it Precarious Beer Field Days Event?
Oh, I think it's more trying to, to spend dollars wisely and invest them wisely, and, and hopefully if, if someone was playing a name game, that way, staff would review it and catch it, if not, hopefully the city council would catch it when it, when it came to you, so the idea is this, this is not long-term funding for the same event, so it's if you're going to expand your event, or if you have a new event and need some assistance to get started or make that expansion, we have other mechanisms, as councilperson Ramsey said, that other, other groups use, you heard a presentation from Williamsburg Live just this past Tuesday, where that's an ongoing need for, for municipal funding there, but there's other avenues through outside funding to achieve that.
Okay, thank you.
And the staff committee on this is, is actually a pretty big committee, and on this particular application, we went through one round of review of the budget documents and asked for clarification on some issues, and had them resubmit application materials, so we're, we're pretty thorough in our review.
And we had a, a total fund for these sorts of programs of $150,000 to begin the fiscal year, can you talk a little bit about the source of that money?
Sure, the $150,000 was carved out in the, in the beginning of our budget process from the Tourism Fund generally, which includes our share of the Senate Bill 942 Tourism Funding.
I just think that's important, because the community needs to know that this is all about tourism promotion of different types, and I think Mr. Pons was instrumental in the beginning of saying, rather than have the Tourism Development Fund Grant Review Committee get bogged down with event requests, that we separate some money to explicitly support events, out of money that we'd already committed to tourism product and tourism marketing, so I think it's, it's good to know that this isn't competing with other general fund projects, because it's coming from a different source of revenue.
Right, I think that's a good point.
So I move that City Council authorize the city manager to award $10,000 from the Tourism Promotion Contingency Budget to Precarious Beer Project's Field Days Event, consistent with the existing policy.
Second.
Ms. Felico?
Mr. Maslin?
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey?
Aye.
Mayor Freiling?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pons?
Aye.
Mr. Zhang?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council, I have another item, this is for the, another Tourism Promotion Contingency Fund request from Culture Fix of $110,000, to give, there's, there's a lot of history here that I want to run through, but this is the same program we just discussed for Field Days, so there'll be a performance agreement, it's been reviewed by staff, and now it's, it's here for your, your ultimate decision. So the Culture Fix is, receives outside agency funding this year of $75,000 to help them support, they already do 30 events in the city during the year, which, which we're very excited about and very supportive of, but $75,000 helps them do that, but at a volunteer level, and they really want to move up to a professional level where they have staff who can help manage things and help them expand and be more efficient, frankly, to, and do more. So they actually applied for Tourism Development Grant through the Grant Committee, and the committee said, well, we had that discussion with council last February, where should this, this lie, and to your perfect segue at the end of your last discussion, Mr. Mayor, felt this, this falls in the Tourism Contingency Promotion Fund, so that's where we find ourselves here with this request, so this request is to, they actually requested $120,000 to add three events to their schedule, and that would be a New Year's Eve event, a Fourth of July event, and, I shouldn't say it, but in a expanded Scrumptious Weekend event, so that's specifically what this is asking, but it's also asking for that professional staff infrastructure behind that, that will make them more efficient and productive in using these funds. So staff is recommending approval of this, but also Mr. Steve Rose is here and has a presentation he'd like to share with you.
Good afternoon, I know you all know who I am, Steve Rose, and here on behalf of Culture Fix, just wanted to do a little presentation, just again to remind you all of the workload that we are achieving right now with a completely volunteer organization, so I always start with our mission, which basically shows that we're trying to offer new cultural events downtown, make it more vibrant, and we've proven that over the last four years, we're, we're now in four years of Culture Fix, which is pretty amazing, going on our fifth in April next year, so second part of our mission is the piece that I like, which is thinking outside the box, and basically taking calculated risks, trying to do things that not necessarily always make money through the budget for that specific event, like you guys said, events are really difficult to, to make the numbers work, some days we lose money on an event, and the next event makes some money, and so we're able to continue to do that event that loses money, because it's a cultural advantage to the city, so that's what we want to try to make sure. So, just wanted to reiterate the, the line of events that we do, Second Sundays, our Music Festival, there's 10 of those a year, we just had one this last weekend, I know some of you were there, it was a huge weekend, there must have been 2,000 or 3,000 people in the streets, which was really exciting to see, so I think, again, with Culture Fix, the traction within the city, within the local area, is that they know, when they see that Culture Fix logo, they understand that it's going to be a very well-run event, and that's what we're really working on, so a wonderful Williamsburg weekend, we just finished that one this last weekend, and just survived, just, you know, getting over that whole workload. Chowder Fest, it's in our eighth year, 550 people attended that event on Friday night, and Oktoberfest, it's our second year, last year was 250, it was the first time we did it, this year it was 440 people, so almost doubled in numbers, so that was really exciting. And then Second Sundays happened on the same weekend, and I put 1,100 attendees there, that's what we've had in the past, we know that was way more than that this time, and basically you'll see that little logo on the side, Wonderful Williamsburg Weekend, that's one that we put together earlier in the year, trying to basically create some of our rates and put them together on a weekend, so that we can encourage that tourism overnight stays, so marketing it with that Wonderful Williamsburg Weekend logo, we've had a lot of good response to that, where people are, you know, realizing that it's not just one night, they can come for the weekend, come and stay, and, you know, we're getting some good traction with that. Winter Blues Jazz Fest, can you believe, we just put the tickets out for that this week, right after Chowder Fest, so we put the tickets out for the Weekend Pass on Sunday night, and we've sold 30 of those already, and that's at a $255 price point, so again, that's not a huge amount of money, but it's a good commitment for somebody to pay $255 to come for the weekend, they're buying rooms, and they're staying for the weekend, so that's, there's nine or 10, this year there'll be 10 events over that weekend, we work with local businesses, we work with Williamsburg Lodge and Colonial Williamsburg to promote that also, and so it's really grown, and we're, this will be our sixth year coming up now, so. Pop-up concerts and shows, again, we throw those in during the year, depending on when an artist is going through town, we've done some events at the Kimball Theater, or we did, Lane Auditorium, and then the Muscarelli Museum, which is now still, you know, able to be used, so approximately four of those each year. Partnerships, again, now that we're established in town, we have some great working partnerships, like with Colonial Williamsburg, the Summer Breeze Concert, it was a little controversial initially, moving it out of Merchant Square, people weren't sure, was that good, was that bad, but overwhelmingly people love the fact that it's over on the grass now, and so that's sort of a fixture in town, again, CW in theory pays most of the bill for that, because it's through Merchant Square Association, but we manage it and make it all happen for them, and there were 16 of those the first year, there were 12 this year, so again, you add those 12 to the 10 Second Sundays, you're at 22 events, you add the other 10 from Winter Blues Jazz Fest, we're at over 30 events a year. Past events, which may come back with funding, these were very popular, the Chocolate Affair we did for six or seven years, I did way back, the Chocolate Chariot Race in Newtown, which I know there's some grins in the crowd there from people who took part in that, these are great events that people keep asking us to bring back, but they require time, effort, money to make them happen. Other initiatives that we've done, there's a big mural on the side of my building, you guys know I'm always pushing the envelope when it comes to new ideas in town, I travel a lot, when I come back, I want to try to create some of that stuff in town, so the championships in Richmond that they had a few years ago for cycling, we put a tent on the DeWitt Wallace Lawn right there, that was the first time a tent had been put on that lawn that wasn't a Colonial Williamsburg event, it took us three months to get through the planning, it was a 20-page contract that we signed, but as soon as it had been done, that following year, Funhouse Fest was allowed on that lawn, Williamsburg Live happens on the lawn, we do events on the lawn, again, we're just pushing, you know, the local entities to try to work together on these types of things. So just in a nutshell, 2019, the projected budget is over $400,000 for Culture Fix, it's a pretty big organization now, with all the ticket sales that we have and all what we're doing, it's over 30 events, right now it's all volunteer staff, so it's tough. Over 4,500 tickets sold annually, 8,000 visits to Second Sundays, that's on the low side now, so those numbers are really, you know, kicking in and, you know, picking up. One slide of statistics, because obviously there's lots out there, which is what I wanted to show is on Winter Blues Jazz Fest, you can see on this left side, there's over 20 states that people come from, and it may be only a couple from one state and a couple from another state, but the reality is, those people somehow found out about it, and they're coming to Williamsburg, and a lot of them are making it their annual destination for January, so, so that's, again, the numbers on there, through Eventbrite, which is our ticketing platform, we're able to ask questions, so that when people buy the tickets, you know, are you staying in a hotel motel, timeshare, friends and family, or whether you live locally? And so that's really good data for us to have, and we're working very closely now with Tourism Council, so that, because they're ramping up with all of their new staffing, and being able to work with them much closely on the statistics, and what questions we need to be asking that's helpful for them, and then obviously helpful for us, when they can market us outside of the area. City funding, for this specific funding request right now, like Michelle said, New Year's Eve celebration, Scrumptious Weekend, which I think pretty much all of you went to that right here downtown across the street, we will repeat that, but again, it's an expensive event, it's a lot of infrastructure to bring in, but there is no doubt that it created a very vibrant weekend downtown. July 4th celebration, couple of years ago, the Summer Breeze just so happened it fell on the July 4th weekend, not weekend, but July 4th, and so we created it into a bigger day and had 3,000 or 4,000 people on the lawn there for the fireworks that evening. This last year, EDA put together a small celebration there with a hot air balloon, and, you know, we helped a little bit with that, but that's the sort of thing that I think we can build on, Colonial Williamsburg has some great stuff on July 4th, depends where you come from, but yeah, but, but we can build on that and fill those spaces, so that we have all those tourists in town that are seeing the, you know, decoration and everything, but then also continue in the afternoon with some fun activities, so that's what we would be able to do, and then as Michelle said, creating an efficient team of staff that's very small, very efficient, but that can make the continu- continuation of things, make it more simplified, more, you know, more streamlined, so that we can actually do these things. What I don't want to do is have created this organization and then find that, like the New Year's Eve event that just, you know, had to go away because they didn't have any paid staff, you know, they were purely volunteers, and it's just a lot of work, so, so I think that's, that's where we're aiming, that's what we've been trying to do from day one. I believe there's some videos here, just wanted to make sure, these are some of our marketing videos, just wanted to show you sort of the standard and the level of those that were, they do have sound with them, but maybe that didn't come through on the transition, but this is Second Sundays, these are the types of videos that we're putting together to promote the area, and now we can share those with Tourism Council as well.
Travis Bruce, Executive Chef and Food and Beverage Director at the Williamsburg Inn at Colonial Williamsburg, my favorite thing about preparing food for people here in this town is beautiful plates, fantastic flavors for all these different critics, I'm looking forward at the Young and Hungry event, to bring the young talent in Williamsburg, bring them through and show people what's going on here in our food scene, we've got fantastic flavors that are coming together with awesome technique, and young and passionate souls to feed young and passionate people, we have a sweetbread terrine, classically prepared with some beautiful sweetbreads, lots of herbs, also gonna hit it with just a touch of rhubarb mustard, to kind of bring in that spring season, lots of other little fancy little garnishes that everyone's gonna enjoy, favorite dish in town, gotta be the tacos at Casa Pearl, absolutely love them, can't get enough of those, Travis Bruce, join us at Scrumptious, Young and Hungry.
So that was that, that was part of, that was the Young and Hungry event, that was part of the Scrumptious Weekend last year, but again, what I was trying to show there is that that kind of marketing, those type of videos, you know, people from out of town in DC, and, you know, in Charlotte, they see those, it really looks, it has that professional edge to it, and that's the organization we are right now, so I appreciate your time.
Any questions for Mr. Rose?
So Steve, first, thank you for putting all your efforts in this, and I know that, got started back in the old inclusion days, and over there in the field at Newtown, with just a dream in a field, you know, you've always wanted to have this type of cultural activity in, in the area, and certainly, you know, you can be credited with, with bringing what we have here today, and kind of growing that, you know, planting that seed, so that other folks, you know, can carry on to some extent, and, you know, Precarious is, is another one, has kind of come along and to create these events, so I think we all are very excited about your success in continuing in this, and, and for everybody else, but I look forward to supporting you financially. Talk a little bit, I know you've mentioned to me in the past, and you just kind of touched on it a little bit earlier, you want to create an organization that lives beyond Steve Rose, and I think that's important, because if you go out and get hit by a bus, you know, what are we all gonna do on the weekends?
Thankfully it's 25 miles per hour, so hopefully you don't.
Or you get run over by a scooter.
Try not to do that, Steve, good, just avoid that.
But, but I think that's an important part of what, what you're doing here with Culture Fix, is trying to create an organization that we'll live on, so talk, talk a little bit about that if you can.
Yeah, basically I've been in town over 20 years now, and having Williamsburg Event Rentals, which is an event company, doing all of the rentals, tents, shares, all of that type of thing, that gave me the ability to be able to put events on, but they weren't getting paid for putting those events on, we had the inventory, we were able to make that happen, and so we've done that over the years, but we realized, you know, after 15 years of doing that, you know, it was time to try to create an organization, but to do that, you needed to have, whether it's James City County, whether it's the city, whether it's York County, we needed people who understand, understood, you know, events and what they did for the area, and so I think in this last four or five years, we felt that that was what's happening here with the Tourism Fund, with you guys being on council, trying to create a vibrant downtown, you know, the studies that you guys are doing, all of it sort of started to come together, and so, like you said, I'm getting older, I'm not getting younger, and I, that's a lot of work that I've done over the 20 years to create a lot of these events, you know, a lot of, Winter Blues Jazz Fest is older than Culture Fix, the Chowder Fest is older than Culture Fix, they were started before Culture Fix, and so what Culture Fix Second Sundays was started 10 years ago, so all, a lot of these events were started way before Culture Fix, they were people's dreams, ideas, hard work, so what we did is we created Culture Fix as an entity, as a nonprofit, so that we could then bring in these great events that are already here, that are already working, and streamline them, and hopefully get to the day where we could have a couple of staff that would be right there, so that people can buy tickets downtown for those events, you know, and help manage them, and so that's why I'm excited that we're getting close to that, hopefully, and, and. And, and yeah, that's basically the, whatever happens to me or Williamsburg Event Rentals or whatever it might be, everybody isn't beholden to that, you know, all these events continue on and continue growing. So that, that was the aim from day one, and that's where we're at today.
I had a quick question, and then I'll turn over the comments for Michelle. I actually had a, I was looking over at the Tourism Promotion Contingency Fund, and I actually had to find myself looking up the definition of what contingency is in the dictionary. And it's, and it's, it's basically, you know, having a fund that doesn't, that helps anticipate whatever future occurrence we have not previously planned. So with the idea, I'm assuming that's the idea and the intent of the contingency fund. My point is, I would, I think Steve Rose has, has a proven record of, over the years, of doing consistently quality special events, and he has proven to council, and I think to the public at large, that these special events add so much vibrancy and opportunities to make Williamsburg a lot, a lot more lovely. So the contingency fund, from my understanding, is a temporary basis. I would like to see some sort of discussions moving forward for some sort of sustained funding, because it seems like Steve is talking about hiring staff. Well, based on what I heard from the last application, isn't this only good for one year? I mean, can you explain and clarify a little bit? I kind of did a long winded way of putting it, but.
Sure, makes perfect sense, and we had the same discussion.
No time for sass.
We had the same discussion with staff and with Steve. So this application was to add those two new events in that third event, and then build some capacity with the understanding that Steve will come in for an outside agency request for future sustained funding at council's discretion, much like Williamsburg Live does, Occasion for the Arts does, those organizations that have, have moved into a, an annual performance but, but need that municipal support.
Right, and it only seems fair because it seems like your effort's only going to grow from here, especially with staff, the more staff at hand, the more folks that can participate. But also, for the amount of money that you've requested, if you have some sort of sustained funding, that can also make that distinct from the true intent of the contingency fund, so that if there are any other organizations, it doesn't have to compete with the great work that Steve Rose and Culture Fix has done. So just a thought out there, I'm happy to approve this, this time, but I'd like for some sort of discussion to keep going. Steve, just want to say, over the years, I know you and I were at different ends on the Tourism Development Fund, but something I've greatly appreciated you is the fact that you still called me and picked up the phone, and we, you know, I think you've convinced me over the years, I tend to be kind of a homebody, so I don't, it usually takes a lot for me to go out to these events, but every time I've gone to your events, it's been great, I know folks love it. The law school, Lori Sisson, the staff member for one of the clinics at the law school speaks highly of you, and it's only shown, not just by reputation, but what kind of Mayor Ponce has said, it goes beyond just Steve Rose. But you absolutely deserve all the credit, and I appreciate what you do, and I approve this.
Thank you.
Just real quick, if I may, Ms. Ramsey, I saw on some of the slides, you had some logos on there of organizations that were sponsors.
The city of Williamsburg?
I didn't see the city in there, that was my point, I wanted to make sure that, you know, when we move forward, the city of Williamsburg's.
Put your glasses on. It's on everything right now. Old slides.
Sure, can I just ask for a point of clarification?
I'm only Vice Mayor, you didn't mean.
I just want to know who's in charge, no. Did we not provide Mr. Rose with some outside agency funding?
We did.
This year, so we have done that.
Yeah.
So we're taking, but at the time, we couldn't commit in the budget to the full amount of what.
And then we asked for the, for the TDF, we actually asked for $290,000. That was our, basically what we've been asking for, for probably five or six years, just, sorry, since Culture Fix began with the last city manager, we've been saying that somewhere in that $300,000 range is the budget that we believe is necessary to create the amount of events that the city is looking to do. And so that's what we initially put to the TDF, and then it was pulled from the TDF. By the time we got to this process, we were already halfway through the year, so that's why we're asking for this amount, which would in, in theory be the similar to the 290, but for the amount of the year we were able to use.
So it's kind of a bridge step.
So it's, yeah, that's what we see it as, hopefully.
Funding at this point to help make these other events happen.
To get those ones going.
And then as it all moves forward, we have to make the decision, do we want to put it in the budget?
Right, right.
And perhaps increase what's in the budget based on the request and, and the need.
So I just want to make sure that.
So this would totally, it would be 110 plus the 75, it's 185. We will be requesting the 290 for outside funding, agency funding for the next fiscal year.
Yeah, this is following the exact process that we had hoped to sort of establish with this fund, which is new events or expanded events apply to sort of get this funding to help them get their feet under them, test out, make sure it's a good environment, and if it is, then they transition out of this because it's not supposed to be sustaining funding, and apply for outside agency funds from the Tourism Fund. And so with this step, you're right, we're taking sort of a bridge, bridge step there. And then next year, as part of the budget process, which has actually already begun, we'll be considering consolidating the amounts that Mr. Rose gets for these events into one block that the council will have to decide upon as part of the outside agency funding requests.
Sorry, go ahead.
So I, I'm not going to belabor what everyone else has said, that you make things happen and you bring a lot of vibrancy to the city, and I would just like to applaud your efforts to increase the city as a locale for a majority of your events. And it's particularly nice because it goes to the walkability of, of the city of Williamsburg, and just provides that extra vibrancy and experience for the residents.
So can you say more about the New Year's Eve event, and how is it compared to last year, and was last year yours?
No, last, last year, there was a small event that we helped with the EDA and Merchant Square, and we created just in one of the buildings in Merchant Square. So when First Nights went away, since then, the Kimball Theater has had an event every, that's really been the only event in town. And that was basically, it came from First Nights. Bobby Blackatt, who's a performer, used to perform always at the Kimball Theater as part of First Night. So when First Night went away as an organization, Bobby continued that event. So he still continues to do that. 400 people can fit in the Kimball, they have a great time, and it goes, and he stops it at 10 o'clock in the evening, so that people can still go and do their own thing. So last year, we created a small event across the street in the Old Binns location, and continued some music there through midnight. Again, about 200 people, it's capacity of all we could do. But the idea would be that we would create an event, again, with direction from EDA and the city as to what they were looking for, that's the whole idea here, is if we have some staff and we have an organization, we can actually interact with you guys and not just us say, this is what we're doing, you can say, we'd like to think that we could do this. So the idea would be that we would encourage everybody to come downtown, eat dinner at all the restaurants, you know, hang out until 9:30 or 10 o'clock, and then we would create an event that went from 9:30, so that we weren't competing with all of the restaurants and all the other entities, we would basically let them do that. Then they'd come, maybe, maybe the lawn at the museum again, we'd put a tent there, we'd basically have some live music or a DJ or an MC, a big screen, and we'd basically take people from 9:30 or 10 o'clock through midnight, watch the ball drop from, you know, New York, and that would be the evening's event. You know, it would be family-friendly, free to the public, basically just come out and enjoy being together for that, you know, New Year's Eve celebration.
But then there was also that event on Prince George Street, do you know how successful that was?
Prince George Street.
Precarious.
So that would be precarious, correct? Yeah, so Hounsetown, precarious, they did an event, yeah, we provided the tent for that separately. Again, very busy, I mean, sold out crowd, probably, I would think, somewhere 400 to 600 people. And so, again, they have sort of filled that void since First Night went away. First Night was 5,000, on a good, on a good year, they had about 5,000 tickets sold. So there is obviously the need or the want for people to want to come out that night, so.
To clarify, this will not compete with what precarious did two years ago on Prince George Street. They've decided to concentrate all their energy on field days, and they are not doing a New Year's Eve event, so there won't be a competition.
And I've already talked to Andrew, they, they're working on stuff, so.
Just want, just a couple of comments. For anybody who did not come downtown this past Sunday, Second Sunday was as busy as I've ever seen the Merchant Square area, whether it's Occasion for the Arts, I mean, it was in a more compact space, or the Fourth of July, a grand illumination, it was absolutely packed.
It was.
Amazing. I assume it had something to do with the three-day.
I think that's helps, that's what we're saying.
Absolutely gorgeous weather.
There were people from out of town who had come for Chowder Fest, had come for Noctober Fest and stayed over, so.
But people wouldn't be coming if the event wasn't worth going to.
Exactly.
Summer Breeze, the transition from Merchant Square area to the lawn of the Public Mental Hospital, I think has been a tremendous improvement. It's just such a more pleasant environment, and I think there were some hesitation on the part of the public along the way about, I mean, I can't bring my own beverages, but everybody seems to have gotten beyond that. The one thing I want to emphasize, that Winter Blues Jazz Fest, the first year that it came out, I thought, what a nice idea he's got, this is never gonna work, it's January, it's cold, and you're killing it. And in, in January, when there's nobody else coming to town unless there's a conference meeting here, it's really a slow time. Can you tell me a little bit about the origin of Scrumptious?
Scrumptious, basically, there was an event, harvest celebration, three, four years ago, I think it was, came to fruition, basically, the Dufflers had an idea, they came to talk to the Tourism, whatever it was then, Tourism Council, but Chamber and Tourism Alliance. And so they created, they wanted to create an event in, in the harvest season, and so they tried to put together an event that would go throughout James City County, York County, and the city. And they tried, and it struggled. Chowder Fest actually went in there and helped, became part of that event, so, you know, we sort of put our event in there, we were the biggest part of the whole weekend. So after a few years of attempting that, and the Chamber of Tourism trying to put the events on again, everybody, events are really difficult to make happen.
It moved to spring in last year.
And so basically, yeah, at one point, it moved to spring, they did it in the springtime because of, you know, planning and suchlike, again, the attendance wasn't what they hoped for. And so the following year, when they agreed as a board, the Tourism Council, to not do it, we basically stepped in and said, you know, give us one more try here, give us some of the funding that, you know, the city through their channels. Plus, I went to James City County, and I went to York County, and asked those guys to put a little bit of money in, not as much because it would be here in town, it wouldn't be in their localities, but those residents that live in their localities come to it and enjoy it. So they both did, they both supported, and so we created Scrumptious this last year, you know, right here downtown, right there, you know, huge infrastructure, came up with a new name for it, you know, the Scrumptious name, and again, we're working in conjunction with other organizations that already had events, Meals on Wheels, that event is on Friday night and always has been, they used to be at the winery. I basically said, come downtown, bring that event downtown, we'll help with the logistics and coordination of it, and we can grow your event so that you as an organization will make more money for Meals on Wheels, which is really cool. The Beer Festival that was right here was getting to the point where it was maxed out in size, so again, we went in conjunction with those guys for the Sunday Beer Festival, and they went from about 1,200 or 1,300 people to close to 2,000 for that event. So again, we're sharing the money that they are paying for infrastructure to create one big weekend, but it takes somebody to make all of that happen, somebody to coordinate those things. City doesn't have time, EDA doesn't have time, that's where Culture Fix stepped in and said, we don't want to create five more events that weekend just ourselves, this way, we've already got two well-established events on that weekend, plus it's the Art on the Square that same weekend. And those were all there. So again, we've created a wonderful Williamsburg weekend by basically just bringing a couple of big events together, but then adding, Saturday, we added another rent in the day, we added the Young and Hungry in the evening, we had a free concert on the Thursday night, so we just expanded on what was there. So again, very big weekend, kind of like Winter Blues Jazz Fest.
So the message there is that we, as a community, as local government, have been talking a lot about events, we want to create a dynamic feeling, the vitality downtown, events are a great way to do that, let's have more events. And the Harvest Festival was an effort by non-event people to put on an event, which is not a good plan, because it's not what we do. And so your ability to take that over, bring in those partnerships, and grow it into something that was even bigger and much more successful, is incredibly encouraging, just like Winter Blues Jazz Festival, just like Chowder Fest, and, and everything else you're doing. But the one thing I want to leave you with is, with that Chocolate Chariot Race, if I ever have to push Doug Pons in Laundry Cart again, I think I might have a heart attack.
Because he almost did.
But if you bring it back, we'll give it a shot.
I'm trying to lose some weight, Paul. I'll move that city council authorized the city manager to award 110,000 to, from the Tourism Contingency Budget to Culture Fix for expanded schedule of events consistent with the existing policy.
Second.
Ms. Felica?
Mr. Maslin?
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey?
Aye.
Mayor Freiling?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pons?
Aye.
Mr. Zhang?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Rose.
Thank you.
This takes us to our last item on the agenda for new business, which is consideration and approval of the Sixth Amended Memorandum of Understanding between the City of Williamsburg and the Williamsburg Redevelopment and Housing Authority amending the structure and responsibility of the Advisory Committee and adding administration of the city's workforce housing program.
So the Housing Authority Board of Commissioners adopted a revised MOU on Monday that changes the structure of the Advisory Board to three members with one alternate, and added a provision that the city would, that the Housing Authority would manage the city's workforce housing program. That's an agreement between the Housing Authority and the city, and so the city needs to execute, needs to authorize the execution of that agreement.
And I believe we're all very familiar with this.
Yeah.
Discussion?
No.
All right, Ms. Mayor, well, I move that the city council approved the Sixth Amended Memorandum of Understanding between the City of Williamsburg and the Williamsburg Redevelopment and Housing Authority as drafted and recommended by staff.
Second.
Ms. Felica?
Mr. Maslin?
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey?
Aye.
Mayor Freiling?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pons?
Aye.
Mr. Zhang?
Aye.
I can't wait for the seventh, it's probably gonna be more exciting. Mr. Maslin, do you have an item for new business?
Yes, so last year, I introduced the concept of free parking for the first two hours of the parking structure during the holiday season, which was essentially 45 days. I thought it would be good to discuss that again, to see if we want to do that, or if we want to authorize the city manager some flexibility in terms of, you know, working with Colonial Williamsburg as a counterpart, and the Merchant Square Association to do a similar program.
Mr. Trevitt, can you give us some numbers, what the, what the parking revenue that we missed out on was approximately?
Sure, according to Ms. Dameron's research, she thinks that it was around $33,000 last year for the period of time that we had free parking, and based on increased revenue that we're currently seeing in the garage, which I'm gonna attribute gratefully to Mark Barham's parking program, we think that that would, that number this year would be somewhere in the neighborhood of $36,000.
Then there's no way to know, or is there a way to know, if there is any increase in use of the parking garage as a result of the free parking? Or that the free parking resulted in additional sales in the downtown area?
So the answer to both questions is that if you do this this year, the answer is yes, we will be able to show you that data next year this time. The answer for this past year, though, is no. Unfortunately, due to the record-keeping of the state and our ability to access sales tax data, we can't get to that for this year. But next year, we'd be able to show you a comparison of a year where we didn't offer free parking to a year that we did, and show you some correlating numbers to sales tax in the Merchant Square area. Of course, that's sort of assuming that the only driver there is the free parking, so you know, it's sort of anecdotal. As far as the number of cars go, because this past year we were right in the middle of implementation, we couldn't give you accurate numbers on increased visitation.
And as I remember it, last year, two of the reasons that we had the free parking were because we were going to a new system with the garage, and we also were in the sort of discussion on the possibility of P3 being closed, and we had hoped that by offering free parking in the garage, people would become more used to parking there and a little bit more familiar, so that if P3 closed, they would utilize that facility. But I think the discussions that we've had with P3 and parking, that people still, particularly residents, prefer surface parking, and whether the garage is free or not, it still tends to be the choice, their last choice. At least that's what I've heard from people, and part of the resistance to closing P3. And I guess my, my thing is, is there any way that we can do a type of voucher or something to show, for, for people to get free parking if they have actually spent some money in the city, because that's the whole reason for having the free parking, is to increase sales.
So the answer to that is yes, but not right now. So the answer to that is yes, but not right now. We're constantly working on adding functionality to our system, and you may remember that this time last year, we were talking about adding the new system, which was New Park, and right in the middle of that implementation, they were purchased by a much larger company called Passport, and with Passport comes a whole host of benefits. Now that they've acquired New Park, they've added to their roster of benefits the reliance on license plate readers, which is what we were looking for, and so as we move through the next year, it's very likely that we will see our system switch from a hybrid of New Park, a Passport, to a solidly Passport system, which would give us that functionality in a much easier way.
And did we get any response from the businesses downtown afterwards thanking us for the free parking or attributing sales?
We got, we got thank you from them, but we didn't get any metrics, they weren't able to deliver any metrics, and they had said that during, I think it was their March meeting, they would talk about it and get back to us, and we never saw that.
Did they send a thank you to city council, I mean, to city manager?
Just a thank you when I asked them for, you know, to give us some information.
So when you asked them for a thank you, they gave you a thank you?
No, when I asked them for feedback.
Oh, okay.
And then that's why they came to the meeting, just to say, hey, we'd like to do it again, but.
Because we asked them to?
We asked them to give us metrics, you know, what's, what was the benefit, you know, because these are merchants, you would think they'd be able to articulate that it helped them.
Right, but they weren't able to do that.
Not as an organization.
You know, and so, help me remember this, did we authorize two free hours or was it just free parking in the garage?
Two hours free.
Two hours.
The first two hours were free.
Forty-five days.
Because the one thing I wonder about is, when we do it over such a long period of time, people can hear the message, but we don't have any way to really market it or get the word out there, and that's probably not our role to market it as much as it is to encourage the businesses to market it. But it makes me wonder, and, and it is a, it's not a small sum of money that would, that we've already budgeted to receive, so we, and we're still, the operation of the parking garage far, the cost far exceeds the revenue that we take in. It makes me wonder if we tried something like, or some, some, some smaller period of time, and one example would be, and I'm not saying this is what we should do, but just an example, if we took that period from Thanksgiving through the end of the weekend, where you've got Thanksgiving Day, you've got Black Friday the next day, and you've got Small Business Saturday the following day, you've got three things to promote, why we're doing free parking this weekend, and test that out, and.
And I think last year, we had free parking for Black Friday, didn't we? And I wasn't sure that was a technology issue or a promotion issue, but.
We had it for a long time.
There was, there was a time when the gates weren't put down, and so for one reason or another, we did it. Now, but to the point of communication, yeah, that's what the association did say, that they, they thought that we need to do, there needs to be more communication, and they would step up and do that.
So I have some questions legally, I mean, how would you be able to show the voucher? Would it be the shop would give you a voucher after you paid something, and then the system will credit you for?
Additional voucher systems, that's how it works. Do you, we would.
I'm saying enforceable.
What we would do is we credit businesses with so many vouchers, they would issue the voucher to the person after they've made the purchase. That's, that's a traditional voucher system, that's how it works.
And I know some of the restaurants do that already.
Luton does it, where they, they buy the, or one or.
They do it now.
Yeah, they buy the tickets and distribute them.
With the Passport, well, I guess, not Passport, but New Tech and Passport, they also can integrate this with.
Yes.
In terms of communication, the one thing, I wish that staff had some, some prior notice, and also members of this body as well, so that we could have prepared some sort of memo. In terms of communication, other folks who would have seen the, the agenda would, may have been able to tune in. Isn't there any, is there any value to maybe just postponing it to next year and seeing once that the new system has been installed to do a test trial or to take up the mayor's suggestion there as well?
Because this could be a good base year, right?
Right, I mean, the advantage of doing it this year would be that we, Barbara and I met with Ms. Overe, the Commissioner, and asked her to do some research on the sales tax collection in the Merchant Square area, and she was the one that told us that the data's just not available from the state.
Despite the last-minuteness of this, under new business, do you think staff reasonably has time to be able to collect the data, get set up, everything of that matter?
I think so, I mean, it depends upon when you want to start the free parking, I mean, in terms of our system now, it's very easy. I mean, we just go in and turn off the license plate readers for the period of time and, and offer the credit, two hours or whatever, the.
So today, you're asking us, without having the framework of which days or which times you want to put the free parking, we're just authorizing you with that large discretion, which I'm comfortable with.
I'm not asking for that.
Sorry, no, but I know, but you will be authorized.
That was one suggestion.
Yeah, I think, I think we need to make a decision on what that's going to be so that Mr. Trevitt's not.
I, you know, I think the question is, do I have the ability to turn off the parking garage equipment? And I think the answer is yes, I do. But I would not want to do that and have such significant budgetary impact without the council saying that that was okay.
And if we turn this off, then it's, if, if I'm going to park in the garage to come to the Stryker Building, or if someone who works downtown who would normally use this garage, or if someone wants to park there just to go look at the Christmas lights, whether they're there to do any business or not, I guess that's my only thing is that.
We would have no way of knowing, I mean, it would just be offering, extending, right now, what you get is thirty minutes for free. And so if the council said we wanted to offer two hours for free, we would just extend that free parking period.
Which, by the way, is a change.
Yes, it is.
The thirty minutes being free.
It is, it's a true thirty minutes free now.
Because it used to be the thirty-first minute, you'd.
Right.
Back at a dollar.
That's right.
So if you're there for two hours, you only pay for an hour and a half?
Well, if you're there for an hour and fifteen minutes, you only pay for one hour.
Okay. Okay.
Hi, guys.
Even if we did it, we tried it, you know, two hours free, and we got some sales tax data from Commissioners' revenue, I don't know that there's a direct correlation. We certainly couldn't, and, and if, if sales tax declined, and even though we did it, could we blame it on the fact that we didn't do three hours free? No, and so it would be hard to, to make any analysis or, you know, to make any determinations from those, that analytics. It's thirty-three thousand dollars, is that a lot of money? But that's one person's salary, you know, working in, in landscaping department, you know, so, or, you know, an entry-level person to the fire department, you know, I don't know what the salaries are.
I hope it's more than that.
Well.
Just about would pay the benefits of a, a public safety personnel.
Sure, and.
Almost.
Is that more important, maybe? So I, I don't know how I feel about it, because I don't know that necessarily providing the extra time in the garage is going to generate more sales. I don't know, I don't know that there's a direct correlation there, because there's two-hour parking on the streets already, and.
I guess my thing is, is that during the holiday season, we got a lot of people from out of town, we got a lot of tourists who do not decide whether they're coming to Williamsburg because they're going to have to pay a dollar an hour at the garage. And when you're, when you travel, you expect that you're going to pay for parking, and so I don't see it being a big impact driver for tourists. I can see it being a public relations for residents and for locals, but since there is still, but there's, I think they're still going to try and find those free surface parking lots first. And I don't know that, that locals will come down to spend more money because they've got two hours parking.
Well, I think one of the concepts last year was, and we were facing P three, but was, okay, you've got one hour parking in P three, which we're enforcing, and so rather than, you know, keep, you know, having your meals short or going back and moving your car, maybe you would spend more time in Merchant Square if you knew you had two hours free. And so we don't know if that actually happened or not, but that was the thought.
Well, yeah, and, and there's, I think the enforcement is, is starting to work. There were three articles in the last word that I sent to Drew today that people recognize, you know, it's two hours, so you park there and you leave, and even commented that the parking garage at a dollar an hour was a bargain, which was nice to hear, so.
You know, so I could go either way, I just, I think for.
I'd be more comfortable if we did one of two things, if we just did the big Thanksgiving weekend or we just said the month of December. I think the forty-five days is, it's a little amorphous to most people, and, you know, then if we do one, and then we get the data from around it and see if it, look at it again next year and see.
Well, I would suggest the month of December because it gives time for communication, don't you?
Sure.
I mean, that, because we're already on Thanksgiving.
Well, Paul says okay, I say okay.
I didn't say.
I mean, it's, it's hard to say no, obviously. It isn't, isn't, you know, a lot of money, but it's not an insignificant amount of money. You know, Mr. Pratt came at, at Mr. Maslin's request to make the request publicly, and so. I don't want us to be anti-small business or seen as anti-small business, and so would like to have some, in the future, have some communication.
Well, and if this is going to become an every-year kind of thing, then it needs to be included in budget discussions, too.
Yeah, that's, I think that's important, too.
We'll, we'll make a note of that for the budget process this year.
And when can you give us a report about how everything is done? I guess, would that be early January, or would this be part of the whole budget report? Or is it on separate work session presentation?
I'll have to explain what you mean.
The results of?
Oh, you mean the outcome of this?
Yes, sir.
No, we won't have it, I mean, we wouldn't have any data to share until we get the sales tax data from the state.
Oh, so that's way later on.
It will be later, it'll be definitely later than January, February, maybe.
Okay, thank you.
Two-month lag, so it'd be March.
Okay, so where are we?
Looks like we're at the month of December for two hours free.
Does somebody want to make a motion?
Ted?
Sure.
I move that we offer two hours free parking at the Prince George Street parking structure for the month of December.
Is there a second? Okay, Ms. Felico.
Mr. Maslin.
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey.
Aye.
Mayor Freiling.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pons.
Aye.
Mr. Zhang.
Aye.
Okay, we have one more potential item for, for new.
Come on.
Well, it's technically unfinished business, or we can put it off till next month, and that is the legislative agenda.
Oh.
I think next month.
Well, I, I like.
Are there any burning issues, Mr. City Manager?
It was my mistake, normally this is on the November agenda, I did the, the homework, you can see from the dates on it back as soon as the meeting was over in October, and we set it aside so that it was out of the way, and we set it too far aside and forgot to put it on the agenda, so it can absolutely wait until December.
But, but unless somebody has some heartburn, I.
No, I'm, I'm happy to do it, I would just say that I appreciate the language with the priority issues. I do think, given how the legislature has changed in terms of control, there has been some talk among, I don't know whether it'll be done or not, but that there might be some discussions regarding the Dillon Rule and localities and the state governments, back to my point when we were presenting on the timeline, but I'm fine with it, I think single-use plastics has become a flashpoint for our environment, and I think it's absolutely crucial that we ought to have that local option moving forward, so I'm happy approving this today.
Does anybody have, are you comfortable doing it today?
Sure, whenever.
Okay.
Okay.
Ms. Mayor, I move that the City Council approve the 2020 legislative agenda as presented by staff via Resolution nineteen dash seventeen and direct staff to begin working on establishing a data for, a date for a review of the agenda with our local legislators.
Second.
Ms. Felico.
Mr. Maslin.